Good morning and welcome to the July 16th meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Good morning. Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
And Kennedy?
Here.
You have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, July 19th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices at this time.
Thank you. And with that, we will make note that Supervisor Natoli has joined us. And would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
And I would also like to welcome our county counsel. That seat seems to fit you well.
Thank you. Welcome.
Okay. So for your consent matters, items 1 through 34, you are -- I do need you to hold item 4 till 2:00 PM. It's authorize the chair to sign a general indemnity agreement allowing Hartford Financial Services Group to underwrite a surety bond in the amount of $53,402,501 to stay the judgment in the case of Joseph Hardisty and others versus Sacramento Air Quality Management District and others. For item 6, you are adopting an ordinance amending County Code Chapter 6.99.265 Title 6 relating to host facility permits. You waived reading on this on June 18th. I do need a motion to drop item number 29 introducing the ordinance amending Chapter 6.20 Title 6 of the Sacramento County Code relating to solid waste management.
The chair will move to drop the number 29. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And then my last note is that you are introducing an ordinance, item 30, amending Section 2.115.240 of the Sacramento County Code relating to the general election period, waiving full reading and continuing to July 23rd for adoption. And that concludes the clerk's notes.
With that, I actually have a card for number 4. Mr. Rodriguez, we are going to hear that in the afternoon, but since you are here, I will allow you to approach the podium and make your comments now.
You know what? I only heard part of what you said there, but it's been moved? The agenda item's been moved, you said?
Yes, we're moving it to 2:00 this afternoon.
Oh.
But for your convenience, since you're here, I allowed you to speak to it now. You can come back at 2:00.
Very kind of you, sir. All right. I'll make this as short as possible. Ain't gonna be sweet. $100 million you guys got us in trouble for, on the hook for. $100 million. This is the first chance you've given the taxpayers any opportunity to weigh in on this. All this thing, time this thing is winding its way through court, it's always been on the closed agenda. Now that it's too late, we are allowed to speak on there. But that being said, I noticed that you're appealing now, and the appeal is inclusive of the judgment against the people who the court took exception to say they were on the hook personally. Now, why are we fronting the money for those people to make the appeal? They should be on the hook for it themselves. Oh, Roger, you know, who helped get us in this mess, all the other two. Why aren't they the ones helping pony up here? Why aren't they the ones now saying, "I will contribute to my defense"? Why is it us? Why are we asked to supersede the court who went the extra mile to say, "Yes, you, you, and you are paying separately because you are personally a responsibility"? And here you are asking the taxpayers to underwrite the bond to put up for their defense. Are they in this room? I don't think so. Where are they at all, anywhere? They're sitting back on the sidelines. That is something that really irritates the hell out of me. And the second thing is, the person who's been the most beneficiary of this has been Tykert, sitting around doing nothing. They have been had the exclusive domain to mine aggregate and while the county tried to snuff the other guy out.
Can you wrap up?
How about we go to that guy at this point and say?
Can you wrap up?
Let's put you to the same spot where Mr. Tykert has been instead of paying this $100 million or whatever the court overrules.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Tommy. All right. So with that, any other notes?
I don't have any notes.
Do we have a motion or is there an issue that, yes, Ms. Peters?
Thank you. Let the record reflect, I'm recusing from item 2 to potential conflict of interest.
Supervisor Natoli?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's on a consent calendar. I just wanted to comment on item 28 if I could very quickly.
28?
Yes.
Item 28 is the county service area 1, receive and file engineer's report and written reports for fiscal year 1920, designate August 6th for the final public hearing and direct staff to provide notice.
My comment is, is that I know that we have, for some time, run at, you know, a serious deficit as it relates to, I think, some of the costs. The road fund contributes about $700,000 annually, if I'm not mistaken. And we've taken a look at this over a number of years. I trust when we come back for the public hearing, we'll have a more in-depth report as it relates to, you know, what, if anything, would be proposed to. At one time, we had proposed, I guess, you know, taking a look at a 218 process. We actually did that and got trounced a number of years ago. And so I thought we employed a consultant to do that. Is that right, Mr. Yell?
I'm looking at transportation. Help me with that.
Okay, I see.
I do not know the answer to that.
Again, we don't need to get into it in depth today. I just want to be sure that when it comes to the time to discuss this, Russ, we're going to have some, maybe some new information, so.
We have managed to, in the last two years, eliminate the road fund contribution to CSA 1, which is the streetlight service area. Now, we're not intending at this point to go back for a 218 process. Are you suggesting that we should do this?
No. Well, county service area 1, that's what this item is. This is CSA 1.
Correct.
Yeah. So you've actually eliminated, and you've done that through what? Through efficiencies, through the installation of LED lights, or?
The retrofit project that has put in about 20,000 LED lights, yes, has--
Taken the energy charge down?
Has taken the energy charge down to the point where, no, we no longer have a road fund contribution at this time.
Okay. That's good news, I guess.
Very good news.
Okay, very good. Okay. That's all I had. Thanks.
Okay. Ms. Peters?
Thank you. I wanted to note in the continued item, or excuse me, the items before us at the moment, that Carmichael Park District is hiring Mike Blondino as administrator. I don't know if he's here. I can't really see. I thought he might come down. Anyway, so we have a new park administrator, and I'm very happy about that and welcome him to the county.
Great. Any others? Is there a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
I voted.
We'll vote again. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And let the record reflect that Supervisor Peters recused from item 2 for a potential conflict of interest.
Supervisor Natoli lost his fingerprints over the break. I guess so.
Put some weights out there to hit these buttons.
Got to hit the spot, I guess.
Okay. Item 35 is the presentation of resolution recognizing and commending mutual aid provided by Sacramento County during the campfire disaster response and recovery efforts.
Mr. Cantelme.
Good morning, board. Chair and board.
If you speak in between the mics, it works better.
Steve Cantelme, Sacramento County Office of Emergency Services. A little more than eight months ago, Butte County experienced the deadliest and most destructive wildfire in the history of California. In fact, it's the sixth largest, most deadliest in the US history. At least 85 people perished in that fire and over 18,000 structures were lost, displacing thousands of people. The estimated damage exceeded $16 billion. The magnitude of the fire quickly outgrew the resources of Butte County and mutual aid was requested almost immediately. Everything from law and fire, first responders, medical staff, care and shelter staff, emergency operations center staff, PIOs, environmental specialists, safety specialists, building inspectors, animal care providers, and many others responded to that request. Marshaling those resources was an immense task. Both government and non-government agencies responded in force, and I personally, as an emergency manager, was impressed with the speed and the number of agencies that did respond. Most of all, I was impressed and appreciative of the response that came from Sacramento County and the Sacramento operational area. Sacramento County alone answered many of the mutual aid requests, providing close to 100 people to the various jurisdictions within Butte County. The commitment of those responders was remarkable. Today, with this resolution, Butte County and the Board of Supervisors would like to recognize the board and the county as a whole for the support they provided to Butte County and to acknowledge those people that stood up for this disaster and were unselfishly given their time and money at times to help others in need. With that, I'd like to read the resolution into the record. This is smaller print. Resolution 19/154, Resolution Recognizing and Commending Mutual Aid Provided by Sacramento County During the Campfire Disaster Response and Recovery Efforts. Whereas the campfire of November 2018 is the deadliest and most destructive wildfire in California history. The fire covered approximately 153,000 acres, burned nearly 19,000 homes, businesses, and other structures in the town of Paradise and the unincorporated communities of Paradise Pines, Magalia, Concow, Yankee Hill, Pulga, Butte Creek Canyon, Butte Valley, and surrounding areas, and displaced nearly 52,000 Butte County residents. And whereas mutual aid personnel from various agencies throughout the state and from across the nation provided immediate action and support by engaging with Butte County's Office of Emergency Management and many of those, and many of which continue to provide post-disaster assistance to support the county for recovery efforts. And whereas the Butte County Board of Supervisors recognize the brave and tireless efforts of individuals who contributed skills, knowledge, time, and energy to the county of Butte, among whom were first responders from the numerous agencies and jurisdictions from across the nation who worked to ensure the safety of the residents of the county of Butte, mutual aid personnel from surrounding counties and communities who worked long shifts to provide staffing in the emergency operations center, including tending to animals rescued from the campfire. Now therefore be it resolved that Butte County Board of Supervisors hereby recognize and commends the services provided by Sacramento County during the campfire and for those efforts that continue to be extended to the county of Butte during the campfire recovery efforts. Passed and adopted by the Butte County Board of Supervisors on the 7th day of May 2019 by unanimous vote. And with that, I'd like to see if I can get the board to take a picture and--
I think that we would like to have a photo taken and be able to send it to Butte County with our appreciation. And, you know, coming to the aid of another county is something that we don't have to think twice about and proud of the work that our county employees did during that time. I see that the first resident moved back into Paradise yesterday. So this is good timing. And I would also, I'm going to recognize Ms. Peters in a moment. When we take the photo, I'd like to have every member of staff who's there that had touched this project, please also participate in the photo. Ms. Peters?
I just want to say, you know, we're not only proud of the efforts of staff, but you too, Steve, for coordinating all this. It was an unbelievable disaster, and we're very proud of the efforts that were made here. And I would ask the county executive to have a color copy of this resolution made for all the departments so they can display it in their office because it's something we should be proud of.
Thank you. That'd be nice, yes, sir.
Proud of all of you, too.
And there's a lot of people that helped to do this, from my staff and the county.
Yeah, that's why I was hoping that we could get the resolutions copies.
Okay. So let's go down, please, staff. And Steve, I will also add that yours is a job that most people in the county don't know even exists and don't know what you do, but we sure are glad you're there when we need you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 36 is the presentation of resolution honoring the Kitchen Restaurant upon achieving a Michelin star.
Can I call up Randall Sellen and Nancy Zimmer for the presentation?
So I'll stand right here so they can see you. And I'm going to ask, we have a short video and ask Metro Cable to run the montage. It'll make you hungry, so hope you had a big breakfast.
Hungry, I'm thirsty.
If only it were later in the afternoon. Well, we have a proud moment here in Sacramento County for the Kitchen, and I'm sure both of you are very proud, too, of all the work you put in to get to this point and for your staff, for all that they've done. Because the resolution has so much good stuff in it, I'm pretty much going to read it. So the Kitchen was founded by Randall Sellen and Nancy Zimmer in 1991, began operating in unincorporated Sacramento County first by being open just one night a week and serving three courses in a former cooking school. And the popularity and culinary fame of the Kitchen prompted the restaurant to ultimately locate to 2225 Hurley Way in the unincorporated community of Arden Arcade, providing diners with a garden setting, cascading waterfall, cozy fireplace, and raised seating to observe firsthand the cooking talent of Randall Sellen, the engaging and entertaining chef MC who provided explanations about the delicious fare being prepared. The unique dining experience offered by the Kitchen now has become a nightly, five-course gourmet dinner that usually extends up to four hours with exciting cooking demonstrations, sometimes live animal acts involving roaming lobsters, unguided self-exploring tours through the premises, allowing for the viewing of various grills, ovens, and prep tables together with spirited dialogue and good-natured exchanges with current chef Kelly McCown, who in 2015 assumed the highly theatric bar first established by Randall Sellen. The culinary greatness of the Kitchen has been recognized, including being named among the top 100 restaurants nationwide in separate polls by Open Table and The Wine Spectator in 2016, and was James Beard Award semifinalist for the Outstanding Restaurant category in 2012, as well as had held the AAA 5 Diamond rating since 2011, placing it in the top 2/10ths percent of restaurants reviewed by the travel insurance agency. The Kitchen recently became the first and only Michelin-starred Sacramento-area restaurant, putting it in elite company, joined by only a few dozen other restaurants in the first ever statewide California Guide by receiving 1 star. Sellen Restaurants, which also owns Ella, Oboe Italian Table and Bar, and Sellen's Market Cafe, had announced in 2015 there was consideration to move the Kitchen from its current location in unincorporated Sacramento County into the city of Sacramento, but decided to remain located in Arden Arcade due to the outcry of patrons, and instead opened a third Sellen's Market Cafe in that city location. The atmosphere of the Kitchen provides balance between adventure and comfort through the new ingredients and innovative dishes, ensuring guests enjoy the experience and hospitality extended by Randall Sellen's son Josh Nelson, who manages the business side of the restaurant, daughter Tamara Baker, who manages the brand and aspect, design aspects of the restaurant, and wife Nancy Zimmer, who acts as the glue for the family-run operation, ensuring the Kitchen reflects the hospitality focus that the restaurant is known for. So the Board of Supervisors of Sacramento County does hereby congratulate the Kitchen for being the first and only Michelin-starred restaurant in the Sacramento area and further proclaims Sacramento County's pride for having such an innovative establishment chosen to operate in unincorporated Sacramento County, as well as extends best wishes as the restaurant continues to excel in culinary greatness. So congratulations.
You know, we've been doing this for 28 years and love Sacramento, obviously loves the county of Sacramento because that's where we started and that's where we still are. And I think I know just about everybody, but Sue, I apologize for not knowing you. And I see Phil obviously avoided us today. So, but anyway, thank you guys so, so much. It means everything to my family. Sacramento is a phenomenal place to live. We've been here our whole lives. I'm from Fresno originally, but I don't tell anybody. It's a great place to look at and review me or Jean-Lee. But anyway, thank you guys very, very much. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you. And Nancy's very proud. Oh, yeah. Yeah. So watch your purse aside. Nancy, not you. Watch you stand in the middle. Okay? There you go. Perfect. Okay. Thank you so much.
Randall, I also, you know, among all of the accolades that were well-deserved, also, I want to note how appreciated the community is for, I mean, you have raised a family of restaurant workers, and particularly youth, that probably is second to none. I don't know, maybe Patrick can rival you a little bit, but--
I doubt it.
And I will say that I would be remiss in saying one of those was my daughter for several years.
Oh, my gosh.
And she has a work ethic that I attribute highly to you. So thank you for that.
Oh, thank you very much. Sometimes, Patrick, it's funny, we get kids that ask us why we try and train them or we teach them a certain way to do things and how to be in the job, and we always tell them the same thing, like, "You're an extension of our family." And, you know, when people talk to you, it's like talking to us. And also, "We're training you for your next job. You're not going to be with us forever, so we want to train you so when you leave us and go somewhere else, you get the job that a whole bunch of other people want because people go, 'Oh, you know how to work.'"
And that's evidence.
It's cool. It's cool. Thank you, sir.
Just before you leave, just to echo certainly what Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Peters have, you know, mentioned, I think that, you know, beyond certainly success in the restaurant business and the, I think, the acclaim and the deserved recognition that you've brought to Sacramento and certainly to your dining establishments, I think, you know, as evidenced even in your comments here this morning, that, you know, you and Nancy and certainly your family, your longstanding commitment to, you know, to the community and, you know, I think have set an example for not just restaurateurs, but I think for business people. And again, your flair obviously, you know, adds something to that and certainly your, you know, sense of humor, but I think your real dedication to helping others be successful as well. And I think, you know, you've demonstrated what hard work and obviously devotion to the family, but to your community can produce. And so I just, again, I echo those congratulations and certainly consider you a tremendous friend and asset to this community, you and your family, and appreciate all of your contributions in so many ways, and so congratulations to you.
Oh, you're very kind. Thank you very, very much. Thank you all. Thank you.
Okay. Item 37 is the county service area number 10, Benefit Zone 3, Public Hearing on the Written Reports of Service Charges for Fiscal Year 2019-20 and Confirm Report and Fix Charges.
Good morning. I'm Bob Davison, the Division Chief of the County Engineering Division, and I have a short presentation on this item. County Service Area Number 10 was formed in 2003 to provide trip reduction services for new growth areas in the county. And currently, the active area of County Service Area Number 10 is Zone 3, and Zone 3 includes the developments of North Vineyard Station, Florin Vineyards, and Wildhawk North. On May 23rd, the board received a written report of operating and service requirements and service charges for fiscal year 1920 and set today's public hearing. In the written report, it's shown that it's proposed to increase service charges based on the Consumer Price Index, which this year is a 3.8%, 3.87% increase on all categories in County Service Area Number 10, Zone 3. Highlights of the budget that are included in the written report are, it's proposed that $125,000 be used for the contract with the 50-quarter TMA for the trip reduction services that they provide. Included in those services are the van pool services. I think we reported previously that three van pools were up and running in Benefit Zone 3. Over the past year, they've implemented a fourth shuttle, so now there are four shuttles up and running. And there are discussions going on between the Amazon fulfillment center at Metro Park and the 50-quarter TMA with a possible linkage of providing shuttles, I mean, van pool services, excuse me, I said shuttle services, van pool services that could provide assistance for the 200 employees that live in Benefit Zone 3 and work at the Amazon fulfillment center. So those discussions are going on. Also included in the budget is $121,000. That would be in the reserves. The reserves can be used for services, including the initial implementation of shuttle services, which the Department of Transportation prepared to report several years ago that predicted shuttle services could be implemented in Benefit Zone 3 when you have 3,000 to 4,000 dwelling unit equivalents. This year's report shows that charges are going to be levied based on 2,300 and 10 dwelling unit equivalents. So it's increasing every year, but it's not quite up to the level where shuttle services would be implemented. So therefore, I recommend that the board open the public hearing, consider any testimony, close the hearing, and then adopt the resolution confirming the written report and establishing the service charges for fiscal year 2019-20. And I can certainly try to answer any questions that you might have.
Supervisor Natoli?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Bob. Appreciate certainly this report, and I know that we had actually a follow-on when this item was set for hearing. I asked some questions regarding CSA 10, and consistent with this report, obviously had received this, the board did in the last few days as well. A couple of comments. One, obviously achieving kind of critical masses relates to either shuttle services and/or a more frequent service beyond, obviously, the current van pool and I think the outreach that's done by the-- a service where then you get all the costs of the hardware, the vans, the insurance and such, and also recognizing that regional transit now is the operator for the E-Trans service in El Grove, which runs adjacent obviously to the south and to the west of, you know, some of this area. It seems to me that there may be some opportunity there to, you know, initiate those conversations and to, you know, look at a partnership that might not be, you know, around-the-clock service or, you know, but maybe, you know, tailored towards the, you know, commute patterns and/or other, you know, necessary services that people would want to achieve without getting into their own vehicle and take advantage of. So, I would suggest that, you know, I think some of the things that have been done at regional transit level certainly the last couple of years have, you know, proven to be successful, demand dial-a-ride, and, you know, again, whether that level, again, would be sustainable, I don't know, but I think that's the type of things we ought to take a look at very, very closely as we begin to ramp up some of the services there. And I'm appreciative to hear about what, you know, with regards to Amazon, I didn't realize there were some 200 employees out of the 1,200, 1,500 that are out of Amazon that actually reside in that area of the county. So, that's, you know, that's good news from an employment standpoint, but I also, I think, from the standpoint of congestion and congestion relief and then transportation alternatives for folks that live in this area and, you know, as homes continue to sell in that area and people make decisions about where they want to live, but also, you know, what they're going to utilize for their commute if they have one, I think it's really important to know that some of these services are out there. So, that additional stakeholder outreach consistent with new homeownership and new residencies, whether they live or rent, is important. So, I just offer those comments and appreciate the report and the attention this gets every year. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to address this issue at this time? Please come forward. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
I'd move to staff recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Item 38 is the Sacramento County Landscape Maintenance District Zone 4 Public Hearing on Proposed Assessment for Fiscal Year 2019-20. Confirm the assessment diagram and levy assessments.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Fresno, Gisee, Department of Transportation. Today's item is the Public Hearing on the Proposed Assessments for the Landscape Maintenance District for Fiscal Year 2019-20. The Landscape Maintenance District provides funding for the maintenance of landscape medians, roadway frontages, and some open space within the district boundaries. The district boundaries are shown on a map in the Engineers' Report. The boundaries cover about 19 geographical areas throughout the county. Antelope area is the largest and provides 90% of the district revenue. Overall, the district maintains 2 million square feet of landscape areas, and services provided benefit about 1,100 or 11,000 more than 11,000 parcels and 200 acres of commercial properties. The district currently collects an assessment, an annual assessment of $42.50 for each residential properties and $66.50 per acre for commercial properties. The revenue, the district revenue is about $500,000, and that pays only for 50% of operational costs for the district. The revenue shortfall is offset by the contribution from road fund. Due to Prop 218, we have not been able to increase assessments for the past 25 years, and we have had the same amount of revenue since 1994. Over the years, the contribution from road fund has made it possible to balance the district budget. Included in the next year's budget are the funds to replace a sound wall on the east side of Wallerga, north of Old Dairy Drive. The wall is leaning out of flum and if not replaced, will fall, eventually fall. Next year's total budget for the district is $1.3 million, as detailed in the Engineers' Report, and the road fund contribution is about $777,000. Today, we ask that you adopt the resolution attached to the board letter confirming the assessment diagram and levy assessment for fiscal year 2019-20. That concludes my short presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Superintendent Tolle.
Yes, thank you, President. Just a quick question on the sound wall replacement in the antelope area. Will you be replacing the plant material as well or some of the trees that have caused the current situation? If that's what's, you know, undermining the footings, then will you have to take out some of the trees and replace them, or are you guys going to cut the roots and go deeper with the footings? What's the plan?
I think that's an issue that will be investigated during construction once we do remove the wall and do additional digging for the wall. If the roots are in the way of foundation there, obviously, they will be removed. At this point, we are not, we don't have any plans to remove redwood trees that are adjacent to the wall. We're also looking at a special design to minimize the growth of the roots, of roots causing future problems for the wall. For example, we may go with the column design that would limit the amount of, you know, exposure to the roots, the foundation exposure.
Distribute the weight to the columns.
Yeah, the column, so the wall would not be resting on the.
Able to save the trees.
Save the trees, precisely.
Okay, thanks. That's all.
Okay. Is there a public hearing?
Yes.
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 Okay. Then if there's no other questions, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this issue? Please come forward now. Seeing none, we will close the public hearings. Is there a motion?
Move the item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Okay, for item 39, you are acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency. This is the public hearing to proceed with projects and levy assessments in Zone 13 of the Sacramento County Water Agency for fiscal year 2019-20.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Carrie Schmitz with the Department of Water Resources, here to talk about the Zone 13 assessment. I have a very brief presentation. On May 21st, 2019, your Board approved a resolution of intention to proceed with projects and levy assessments in Zone 13 of Sacramento County Water Agency. Today, I am here as a follow-up to that action, and I'm asking that your Board adopt the resolution instituting projects and levying assessments in Zone 13 for 2019-20. In 1987, the Board approved the formation of Zone 13 in unincorporated Sacramento County. The purpose of the zone is to fund long-range planning studies and services related to water supply, flood control, and drainage. Assessments are levied based on a land use area methodology that was developed in 1995. In 2019-20, Zone 13 will fund the programs listed in the Engineers' Report, which include the Water Forum Successor Effort and Habitat Management Element, the county's compliance with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, the county's engagement in delta-related issues, and implementation of the National Flood Insurance Program. Today, I'd like to ask that your Board take the following steps: open the public hearing regarding the Zone 13 projects and assessment for 2019-20, consider public testimony, close the public hearing, and adopt the attached resolution instituting projects and levying assessments in Zone 13 for 2019-20. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Superintendent Tolle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Carrie, just a quick question on page 7 of 17 under the budget for this year, and a lot of narrative that goes behind it, which is very helpful. So, under drainage, there's a drainage studies contingency in there for 180,000. Do you build that in annually, or do you anticipate that there are going to be some drainage studies and, you know, do you carry that contingency as a line item every year?
Not every year. I think.
Okay, so what are you anticipating this year, I guess, to my client question?
And that's something that I'm happy to get back to you on. That would be a drainage question and kind of on the other side of the house, but I think that they do put a placeholder in every so often just in case something comes up. I know on water supply, we might anticipate, for example, this year, we are considering that, you know, delta-related, we might have some delta-related expenses, consultant expenses. So, there are things like that that come up.
Okay, so it's a contingency, not necessarily for just drainage studies, then?
No, it's not. I think we can get you.
It's okay. I was just curious as to carrying that item.
I can get you more specific information on that.
And then just one other question on the, I know in past years, we've had some discussions certainly have been followed by the Department and others, but with our contributions to other agencies, we've got almost a million dollars annually into the Water Forum Successor Agreement and the Habitat Mitigation Plan for the Lower American River.
Right.
I understand the Water Forum piece of that. What about on the Habitat mitigation? Is that unending? Is that basically a forever commitment? And if so, could you just do a brief description of what that entails?
So, the Habitat Management Element is actually, it's habitat projects in the Lower American River. So, gravel projects.
Right.
It funds kind of partnerships with the Bureau of Reclamation. So, Bureau of Reclamation will often contribute, you know, amounts, funding for those projects.
So, are we committed, though? I mean, what is the commitment? Is it, I say, is it forever?
It's part of the Water Forum agreement. It's an ongoing commitment, and there's an inflator every year.
So, the work is never done?
The work is ongoing, yes. And I will say, though, that we are, right now, evaluating the Water Forum and funding for the Water Forum and the Habitat Management Element, so as part of a broader effort.
Yeah, I'm not questioning the merit of what we do. I just was curious, because I know the Water Forum, you know, again, we had some discussion before this Board, and obviously I've had briefings, and I'm sure other members of the Board as well. I just, on the Habitat mitigation plan, is it something that we got committed to because of the Freeport project, because of other decisions for water takes, that we were committed, again, for ongoing maintenance of habitat? Or, I know about the gravel beds, and that's been fairly successful for some of the spawning and such, but I just didn't know if this was without end. I guess that was more my question than anything else.
It's part of our commitment as part of the Water Forum agreement. So, when we sign the Water Forum agreement, there's a specific Zone 13 commitment to the Habitat Management Element and to the successor effort.
That's in perpetuity as far as?
Correct, as long as we are a member agency of the Water Forum agreement.
Did others commit to Habitat mitigation as well?
Correct. City of Sacramento, so City of Sacramento and County of Sacramento are the largest funding contributors to that program. I think Placer County Water Agency may put in a little bit as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Any others? All right.
Ms. Chair, now I was kind of puzzled. Were you going to say something here? Okay.
It's just generally the way he looks.
Okay, okay.
All right, I will open the public hearing. If there's any member of the public that would like to address this at this time, please come forward. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Okay, item 40, approve the 2018 annual reports for the Antelope-Carmichael-Floren Road, Fulton Avenue, and Watt Avenue Property and Business Improvement Districts and provide for the levy of assessments for fiscal year 2019-20.
Good morning, members of the Board. My name is Dorothy Codani, and I'm a senior civil engineer with the County Engineering Division, and I'll be here to present the item as was read into the record by the clerk of the Board. Property and Business Improvement Districts, or known as P-Bids, are required to submit written reports in each year of operation in accordance with the Streets and Highways Code. These reports typically summarize the prior-year activities, accomplishments, and financial positions, along with providing the same information for the upcoming year. This item requests that your Board approve the annual reports that have been submitted and adopt five resolutions, which will authorize the 2019-20 levy of assessments for the five P-Bids within the Sacramento County. So, unless there are specific questions for the Board that county staff can answer for you and before proceeding with these recommended actions, I would like to hand over the podium to the various P-Bid representatives in attendance and have them talk to you about their particular P-Bids.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? I do have two cards, which I believe will address what you just stated, so Rachel Taylor.
Thank you. My name is Rachel Taylor, and I am the Executive Director of the Carmichael Improvement District. I am new in my position. I believe I've met you, Susan, a few times, but I now am in this position, and I have been the Executive Director since May of this year, so I'm just now familiarizing myself with the district and with the job. I'd like to report on the doings of the district in the last year and our upcoming year. The district was established in 2016 by this Board, and we have made leaps and bounds in the last three years as a district. We are fully covered on security and maintenance for the area of the district, and we pride ourselves in working toward a clean and safe district for our Carmichael community. Our motto is that we are leading the transformation of Carmichael to a prosperous, engaged, and desired, desirable community. We have made positive changes in the area as outlined in our annual report, and we are working towards economic prosperity in the central Carmichael community. So far, we have done two business walks within the area in the last year alone, and we have one more planned for the fall, in which we are outreach to the businesses within our district, letting them get to know us and getting to know them and what their issues and concerns and what are. So, we're also working on some street banners that we will be placing throughout the district. We went through a rebranding process recently, and so, we're excited to unveil a fresh, new brand for not just the Carmichael district, but we're hoping the Carmichael community as a whole.
Have a question?
Yep. Ms. Peter.
Welcome, and good luck in your new job. Happy to have you there, I know. I, maybe Brooks Erickson may have to answer some of the questions since you're so new, but I wondered if you can tell us some of the advancements that have been made, you know, number, in the cleanup and the security and fewer crimes or more crimes and that sort of thing? I don't know if you would know.
Yeah, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but we definitely have seen a decrease in crime and in our statistics in the area. We get our maintenance report from our maintenance team every single month, and we've noticed a definitive decrease in drug paraphernalia in the area, so, you know, I think that speaks volumes to what we're doing on the security side and then what we're doing on the maintenance side as well. And we really feel that we have this sort of kind of tactical team working toward creating this safer environment in the Carmichael area. Obviously, it's a work in progress, but we are moving toward a more connected community and really working to engage with those business owners so that they know that we exist and that we provide these services to them and to their properties.
From my standpoint, I can tell you that all the people that I've spoken with have been very happy with the results of what the P-Bid has accomplished to date. They tell me that it's much cleaner, and they feel safer, and all the things you want to have happen, so, and hopefully, the last phase of the transportation improvements, which start this summer, will complete the work on the Carmichael Downtown for you. I'll be very interested to see your new branding, if you wouldn't mind including me on your distribution list.
Absolutely.
And your business. And your business walk results. I'm always interested in knowing what the businesses are thinking in all the P-Bids in my district.
With 650 businesses within the district, we are, we're hoping to tackle more of them. Obviously, it's a big task, and I've actually, as a new Executive Director, have made it kind of my goal to reach as many of them as I possibly can in this first year, and try really hard to make myself available and known to them, so that they feel that the district is really working with them and toward a better future for them.
And, as I mentioned earlier, we have a new park administrator for the Carmichael Park District, so hopefully, you can connect in with him and let him know the kind of things that you're doing, and...
He's already on my books.
Okay, good, good. Great. Well, thanks for being here today, and good luck to you in the new job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cory Droux.
Get my notes in order here. Good morning. My name is Cory Droux. I'm the Executive Director for Floren Road Partnership. 2018 was another successful year of advocacy and economic development for Floren Road. We were able to handle over 2,300 calls for security service. We are now in over 100,000 pounds of illegal dumps to the landfill and out of our district. We have, nearly all properties on Floren Road have undergone some sort of facelift or a full remodel. We've had a lot of properties that have been fully gutted and remodeled, so we're looking very good on Floren Road. Our homeless navigator had so many successes, thanks to Supervisor Kennedy for providing our navigator for Floren and Mack Road. Our navigator in 2018 housed nearly as many individuals as the railroad project. So, we did very, very well in Mack and Floren Road. We're very proud of that. Our foundation helped to support Luther Burbank High School. We helped to support the Martin Luther King Junior High School, Junior Library, Phoenix Park After-School Program, National Night Out Events, Floren Historical Society, Vietnamese Festivals, the Sheriffs and Volunteer Program, So Far Sound, Sacramento Tree Foundation, and the California Association of Student Councils, which sponsored students from Luther Burbank High School to go to conference. We have also been able to compile a lot of data for our business walks. We now know that our Floren Road, Floren Town Center, Floren Mall, Starbucks location is the busiest in Area 49, which extends from South Sacramento all the way up into Placerville. We are the most, that is the most profitable and busiest store in the Sacramento region. Our Wells Fargo and our B of A are also one of the busiest branches in Northern California, and our Walmart store is the most volume of all of the Northern California stores. So, we are an economic powerhouse on Floren Road. We have managed to put together a fun video for you today. It's always a pleasure to present numbers, but I think a video and pictures sums up how our 2018 looked beautifully. So, if, I don't know who would be playing, but if we could play the video, that would be amazing.
The trailer. I thought that we've had so many superhero movies come out this year, that it would be a little bit fun to do a superhero theme. We really appreciate all of the support of Sacramento County, all of the supervisors, and we appreciate the ongoing success for Floren Road, and thank you very much for having us today.
Thanks, Cory. Thank you very much. The successes are very visible when you're on Floren Road, so appreciate you.
Thank you. We're getting there.
Thank you. David Kuhnan.
Hello, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm David Kuhnan, the past Chairman of the 80 Watt District and current Treasurer for the 80 Watt District, and have Rebecca Evans, Executive Director, with us. Very honored to have her and everything she's doing. I don't know, say, we are heading in a great direction. We've got a shared partnership in our security, our clean areas, and the communication between our security and the CHP and the SAC County Sheriff, and with the SAC City Police Department is, I couldn't ask for a better group of organizations working together. It's pretty fantastic. We've had a great year. We've got our LPR cameras in. Interesting statistic, the first month they were in, 750,000 impressions. Six months later, we're down to 480,000 impressions. I don't know. I think people are seeing, you know, they're avoiding, if they're doing the wrong things, they're avoiding. And then, we're getting, out of those impressions, we went from 4,200 hits, meaning that's somebody that did something wrong that needs to be caught, down to 3,100 impressions. So, I think it's doing the right thing and getting the wrong people out of the area. We've got 187 parcels, about 400 businesses, and just another crime stat, or not crime, but we ejected 1,250 people that were vagrant trespassing throughout 2018. And we've worked real hard at trying to help the businesses create an inviting atmosphere. I think one of the other cool things is, we got another median gate between Myrtle and, I believe it's Wynona Way. Thank you very much for ever, whoever made that happen. That was, I think, yeah, thank you. That was very good. So, that's part of our thing, is to get fencing in the medians. We brought some cool goody bags, a nice little thing for you to take and use, and it's got our annual report in it, and I do believe we have a, I'll call it a less Marvel epic video, a little more relaxed. She does good. I've seen her stuff. She's very good. So, if that video is available, perhaps we could queue that up, and it's a little more relaxing. Just relax, everybody. Yeah. Where is that? Thank you very much, but you can see some of the stats. Our crime is still down over 40% from baseline year, from when we started. I think that's very impressive, and that video is done by our very own Executive Director. She's really good at that, and...
But she missed the giant cookies that you make. I didn't see a picture of those.
Yeah, we should probably wheel out a few of those. Those are productivity inhibitors. They just slow you down, you know, those cookies. So, happy to answer any questions. If not, thank you very much for your support and what we're doing.
I just want to congratulate you on the great work your board has been, and your Executive Director, have been doing in this area. It, obviously, most of your money is going towards security, and it shows with the crime drops, and that's, can only benefit your businesses and the neighborhood, too. So, then the marketing piece that's been added, I just think is terrific, and...
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome for the fence.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Good luck with renewal.
Yeah, thank you. We're in renewal. Thank you.
Melinda Epler.
We won't say the oldest, but maybe the longest-standing.
Please, none of those things. Good morning, Chairman Kennedy and members of the board. Sorry I didn't submit my slip earlier. I am here, no video, and I'm hoping that I can convey to you, with my iPad, all of the wonderful things that we have been doing this last year. I'm Melinda Epler, Executive Director of the Fulton Avenue Association. We've been a P-Bid in Sacramento County since 1998. It feels good to be back here after a banner year. Last summer, we were here celebrating our fourth renewal with the highest percentage of support we've ever seen. So, we celebrated that for a while, and then we celebrated our 20th anniversary. After we were done celebrating, we sat down and took a look at how we can step up our game. So, we enhanced our security and cleanup program services significantly. We did increase our assessment last year for the first time, and we promised our owners that we would use that money to make as much of an impact as we possibly could. And we know, as the other P-Bids know, that the way to do that right now is through our cleanup and security programs. We've seen a decrease in homeless camping, but we've seen an increase in disturbed persons. So, I'm hoping that the increase in disturbed persons can be addressed with county-wide increase in mental health services. We're doing what we can to keep the numbers down of property crime and vandalism and interference with business, and we're doing a good job. Hillary Gould and his crew at District Maintenance Incorporated have hauled 17 illegal dumps. They've cleaned up six homeless camps and removed a bazillion buckets of garbage and trash from the streets in the last nine months alone. Our new bus shelters are being utilized and stayed clear of damage and debris. We're very, very happy about that. Our bus shelters are relatively new, and we were not exactly sure how they would fare our traffic, our commuters, and pedestrians. Our annual signature events continue to evolve and thrive. Cruise Fest boasts its ninth year this year on Fulton Avenue, and that is the event that we partner with the California Auto Museum. It's the first Saturday in October, and it brings thousands of people to Fulton Avenue that probably would not otherwise have been there. We are a car-centric destination in Sacramento, and so this is, this to us is the most appropriate event we could possibly have. The tree lighting, now in its 13th year, is the first Saturday in December. This event is highly revered and continues to be our gift to the community. We're excited to announce this holiday season that a Festival of Lights Parade will be added, and it is our first year, so some of those details are forthcoming, but it will be the precursor of the tree lighting on December 7. New street banners this spring bring smiles to our customers, commuters, and business owners. They elevate our presence as a destination shopping and dining district. We have new restaurants that we're excited about. We have new barbecue. We have new Thai and new sushi. The banners, their overarching message is "Find it on Fulton," and we hope that everyone that sees them remembers that. So, if there's something that they do need or want, that they come and look for it on Fulton Avenue. We're grateful for our ongoing partnerships with the community, notably FEC Park District, Chick-fil-A Arden Fair, and the newly formed grassroots Arden Arcade Heart Group. For quite some time, we were the Lone Ranger in our area, so now we feel very fortunate to be joined by the new nearby P-Bids in the county, 80 Watt, Carmichael, and Antelope. The more we can work together, align on issues that affect us all, and empower each other's corridors and areas to consider formation, the stronger District 3 will be. We're eternally grateful to you, Susan, for your support, your staff's support, and all the support we receive from Sacramento County. We salute you.
Oh, thank you. And we salute you, too. We, I have been trying to get P-Bids as, more and more as I can, got a couple I'm working on now in addition, and we always use Fulton Avenue as the gold standard. Everyone wants to be Fulton Avenue, and how did they do it? Got to put 20 years in first. But, I mean, I get nothing but rave reviews on the work that you do, and I know it's tough being in an urban area, but I think you do a wonderful job, you and the board, and congratulate you on that, and...
Thank you.
Look forward to the next 20.
Thanks so much.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. And is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address this issue? Seeing none, is there...
Oh, Antelope.
I apologize. I'll put in a card.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. My name's Chris Evans. I'm the Executive Director of the Antelope Business Community District, your newest P-Bid. And we actually got funded in February, so I'll give you a quick update on what's going on. We are able to produce about 96 hours of additional security enhancements right now in the district. We've been very, very fortunate. One thing we don't have in my district that we run into every day is a huge homeless issue. Unfortunately, we do have a huge drug problem. Most of the people I'm running into on a daily basis that are homeless in our district are drug addicts that need help, and so we continually work with different agencies within the county and services to try and get the help that we need. In a very short period of time, our security team, which is Night Watch Security, they currently handle about 55 calls a week, and those are calls for service that would normally be going to the Sheriff's Department for people laying in front of the doorway, or panhandling, or something like that. So, we've had tremendous success in a very short period of time. Our maintenance is done by Citywide, and they've been able to come in at least one day a week and do complete cleanup. All three of the homeless areas we had have now been cleaned up, and we're able to maintain them, so that they're not being repopulated. And at the same time, we intercept those people and find out what services they need, and try and direct them to the help they need. And in closing, I'll just say that we have had tremendous support from Supervisor Frost's staff and Supervisor herself. We appreciate that support. We count on it every single day, and we're starting to make an impact on Antelope, and by next year, I'll have a really killer video for you. Thank you.
Hang on. Supervisor Frost.
I just want to congratulate you, Chris, for the great results that you've gotten in such a short time. You've cleaned up some major homeless camps, and the community is really excited about what you're doing. One of the very first things that I was asked when I got elected was, can you figure out a way to help us establish a center of town and bring restaurants and better businesses to Antelope? And I know in my heart that you are the, you are the beginning of what will result in a nice, in a better commercial district that invites businesses. But I also wanted to thank you and all the other P-Bids that are collaborating and working together. I think it's really neat that you guys are helping Antelope out, and I want you to know that I'm using your successes in our efforts in Orangevale to begin to have that conversation with landowners, property owners, and businesses. So, thank you for everything you're doing. You're doing an amazing job.
Well, thank you. And I will say that we are so excited, because like 80 Watt, they have a monthly security meeting where they bring in the hot team, the pop team, they bring all the various agencies, and so we've been able to actually piggyback on that. Instead of trying to start it over and create our own meeting where we have to draw them all out, we actually sit in on their meetings, and now we're starting to have different P-Bids cooperating and working together, and it's really starting to have an overall effect. And we're actually meeting right now with a pretty large group of people. And we're actually meeting right now with a pretty large group of people who are looking to do a North Watt district. They want to, a lot of the problems that we're having on Antelope and in the 80 Watt district are causing a little bit more of a problem on North Watt. So now that community's starting to get together and have meetings to talk. So, lots of things exciting, looking forward to a great year, and thank you for your support.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'll say one other thing.
Trying to walk away on that.
Yeah, I know.[621.66][621.66](laughter) Man that doesn't like the podium is a good thing. I would suggest maybe you reach out to Al Rolet at Turning Point...
Absolutely.
...to address some of your issues because there is a lack of services in the north part of the county, and there may be opportunities there.
Absolutely, we'll follow up on that for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Can I leave now?
Yes, you may. Thanks, Chris. I have no more cards. Is there anyone else representing a P-Bid, or is this to address the P-Bids?
Just a public comment.
No, not, just on P-Bid, on this...
Yes, on this specific topic.
I need you to turn in a card when you're...
Yes, yes, I arrived a little bit late, so I apologize for arriving a little late, but there's an important comment. I just have a question really for you guys. First of all, it was good seeing you on Saturday at Sex City with our organizers on transportation. Also, I just want to ask a question. I mean, I hear about how much of an amazing job we're doing in hypercriminalizing people with mental health issues, drug addictions, that have been just some of the most severe trauma that you can imagine that these guys have went through as kids and as adults now keep repeating that trauma over and over in their communities. And, you know, there was, there was an invasion of the area where they were housed over there on Stockton. And now I go to Jack and the Box tomorrow, like at night, every time at night, everybody's in the parking lot, in the communities.
I'm sorry, sir.
They're just scattered. So all I want to ask is, what are we going to do to help address that issue?
Sir, sir, you will have an opportunity to speak on an agenda, item not on the agenda, or an item not on the agenda. This is specifically to item number 40, and you're not really addressing item number 40 at this time.
Okay, okay. So just think about the question. Think about the question, and then maybe hopefully we'll respond by the time we come back around.
Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to speak on item number 40 specifically?
More coming.
And this is on...
Yeah, 40 P-Bids.
On P-Bids, okay.
Yes, I would love to talk about P-Bids.
You have two minutes.
Oh, perfect. I want to say shame on the P-Bids that came in here talking today about their security and maintenance program. Half of those folks that they are trying to eject through their hypercriminalization of folks who are outside and mental health illness are actually from those neighborhoods. You guys should know better than anybody that we're in the middle of a housing crisis and that our rents are increasing, and that in fact, for every, for every $100 our rents increase, our outside population goes up 30%. So these in fact are not vagrants and people on the street. These are our neighbors, people who used to be our neighbors. Patrick Kennedy, you should know better than anyone the problem with the business districts and what you did on Stockton Boulevard. You never showed back up to that meeting, but did you have you shown up to the P-Bid What are all of you doing? You're giving money to improvement districts that perpetuate gentrification and displacement. I speak to you words that you probably don't even know the definition of, so let me break it down. Every single time that you bring new business, and not even new business, I'm talking about like the Walgreens and the Applebee's and the weird things that you guys bring to your areas, what you do is you literally start to create a perpetual cycle of criminalization because then you bring more police officers into those neighborhoods. These were, these are oftentimes poor neighborhoods that you're trying to revitalize. So you're bringing police officers into neighborhoods of people of color and kicking them out of their homes. Then when they live outside, you perpetuate their criminalization even further by sending law enforcement, and law enforcement is the only point of access to housing services in the city. So until you hit a cell, you don't get housing. That's a problem. It's not something to be fucking celebrated. Two minutes is up.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have on this item, so with that, we'll bring it back to the board. Is there any comments, questions, or a motion?
Item?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Item number 41, please.
Hey, item 41, authority to execute an agreement with the City of Sacramento for the Auburn Boulevard Bridge replacement at Arcade Creek in the amount of $1,200,000.
Good morning. I'm Dan Schuman with the Department of Transportation. The City of Sacramento is currently delivering a project to replace the bridge on Auburn Boulevard that crosses Arcade Creek near Winding Way up at the city-county boundary. Since the project involves both work in the city and the county jurisdictions, we have before you today a request to approve a city-county agreement that will address the design, construction, and administration of the bridge replacement project. The recommended agreement has three main components to it. First, it provides for the construction of a second left-turn lane from westbound Auburn Boulevard onto Winding Way. This is in order to address congestion and level of service concerns that exist at that intersection. Also, for the county to provide funding for this improvement up to $1.2 million. It also authorizes the city to acquire rights of way necessary for the project rights of way within the unincorporated area through either purchase or eminent domain, and set some conditions with respect to those right-of-way procedures. And then finally, the agreement consents to a three-month closure and detour of Auburn Boulevard during construction to improve safety, minimize traffic impacts, and then to reduce project costs. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Matt Sato with Drag Hageling Associates. Matt is the city's project manager, and he's here to provide an overview of the project and some details on the proposed road closure and detours, as well as, excuse me, as well as the other construction staging options that were considered.
Hi, Matt. Haven't seen you in a while.
Good morning. It's been a while. It's funny, talking about the P-Bids up here, I remember back in 1998, I was actually charged with helping Fulton Avenue get that P-Bid and start initiating projects, so it brings back some really good memories of working with Melinda and the group out in Fulton Avenue. But here, today on a different project, happy here on behalf of the City of Sacramento to provide you some background information on the Auburn Boulevard Bridge replacement project. Let's see, I guess we have a clicker here. So just to orient you on where we're at, Dan mentioned, this is the Auburn Boulevard Bridge over Arcade Creek. It's in front of the Del Paso Park. So this is just east of Watt Avenue. What you see on the screen there in the bottom left, that's Winding Way. And then up in the upper right, that street coming in, that's State Route 244, which is actually the I-80 off-ramp onto Auburn Boulevard. This is a little interesting, and you're probably aware of this, but this is essentially a little island in the middle of the county that the city owns. The city has the park and the bridge in front of it. The county actually is responsible for pretty much everything else outside of it, so including the Winding Way intersection. This project is a bridge replacement project. The original bridge, actually if I go back, the original bridge that goes right down the middle of Auburn Boulevard was constructed in 1927. It was widened in 1965 on the outside, but essentially Caltrans goes out every two years and does bridge inspections. From their inspections, they found some spalling of the concrete underneath the old structure, some cracking. From this inspection, they deemed it what they term structurally deficient, which then makes it eligible for replacement under the federal Highway Bridge Replacement Program. So that's what the city is charged with. As I mentioned before, the county is responsible, though, for the Auburn Boulevard and Winding Way intersection. That intersection has some capacity issues. As many of you know, the left turn from Auburn Boulevard onto Winding Way backs up quite often into the, into the through lanes. And so as part of that, the county has future plans to widen that intersection, make it larger so you have a dual left-turn pocket coming off Auburn Boulevard onto Winding Way. So as part of that, when we're doing this bridge replacement project, we have to consider what other plans there are in the future for Auburn Boulevard, and we have to try to account for that additional width. The problem is that the feds don't pay for capacity-increasing improvements like this. They'll pay for the bridge replacement in kind, bring it up to standards, but any other capacity-increasing parts of it are on the local jurisdictions to pay for. And so we've been in discussions with the county for a few years now, working back and forth on this, and the agreement you have before you today represents what we've come up with as far as the county's share of improving that intersection and essentially accounting for the additional cost the city will incur when replacing this bridge. So, as far as where we are right now on the environmental, I want to give you an update just kind of overall on the project. We've done a lot of our fieldwork on this project. The key piece that we're missing right now is we need to hone in on what the scope and project description is. Does that include the dual left-turn pockets? Are we doing this all, constructing this in one season? Are we doing it over probably two or three years? Those are key pieces that we're here today to receive feedback from the board on that will help us then complete the environmental documentation phase of the project. As I just mentioned, one of those key components we had to consider is how do you construct this? And I'll go over that in a second. There's many challenges with the different ways you can construct this project. Another thing we looked at is, you know, when we do the construction out there, there's a lot of pedestrians and bicyclists that use this section, so we tried to look at, are there alternative routes that we can send bikes and pedestrians that are safe? The answer is, it's challenging out there. There really isn't. So we, as part of the project, have built into it a temporary bridge that's going to be a little bit to the south of the existing bridge, and it will accommodate pedestrians and bikes throughout construction, no matter which way we construct it, whether we do a full closure or whether we do construction over multiple seasons. And then through this section, there are a lot of utilities, and I'll talk a little bit about why that's going to be a challenge in the end. So, I'm not going to go over boreous engineering details. I tried to put this in a very simple way. So, if you can see in the middle, that's the original structure that was built in 1927, and it's a little different than the outside pieces that were widened in 1965. So we can't just go through and cut and splice this bridge in anywhere we want. We have to take it apart in logical pieces. And so when you look at the staging of this, you can see that we're going to have to take this apart in stages. The new bridge is also going to be three and a half feet higher than the existing bridge.
Oh, good.
As many of you know out there, that area floods on a consistent basis. So, we're trying to find that happy median. We can't raise it, you know, by the standards, we would probably have to raise it about eight feet. And we can't because of the impacts. It would look silly out there to have this eight-foot raise in a bridge out there. So we had to find a happy median in between, and that was about three feet, which accommodates a 20-year storm event. So, as you can see, as we try to build the new structure higher, it presents challenges though as you stage it. So we have to take it apart in multiple pieces. Essentially, what you end up with, though, is, I said two to three years, but likely it's a three-year project. You can see we have to take the lane width down from 12 and 11 feet down to a narrower lane width, 10 feet. And you also have to shift traffic significantly. You've shifted one direction to start out with, you then shift it to the outside, so you're shifting traffic in multiple directions through this timeframe. For all these reasons, those are challenges, those are really the challenges we have with staging this. It's really, the traffic control is complicated. You're moving people, you know, when they get used to shifting to the north, now all of a sudden, in your next phase, you're taking some to the north, some to the south. It gets a little confusing for drivers out there. It's not, although we're able to accommodate probably five lanes of traffic as we do this, the problem is, is that it's not all rosy. It will be slower traffic through there, and you're still going to end up with traffic delays. So the alternative to this would be doing a full closure of Auburn Boulevard. Now, when I say that, Auburn Boulevard carries about 33,000 vehicles a day out there. So that's, that is quite a bit of traffic. We took traffic counts during the school year, and we took traffic counts during the summer because the traffic is significantly impacted by the school year out there with American River College nearby and the other schools. What we found is that during the summer, we can do a full closure. So the plan would be to do a full closure for when school is out in May and reopen it prior to August opening of school. The construction, there's a lot of construction that has to happen outside of that, but their full closure period would bring during that summer. What we looked at is, well, where would traffic go? We would have to detour traffic. The most likely way would be to take it along 80. And the beauty of that is, as you go up Watt Avenue and hop onto 80 to get around the project over to that 244 ramp onto Auburn Boulevard, that is, you're actually never on the main line of 80. You're in that auxiliary lane. If you're familiar with this, you get onto 80 and you never have to merge into the main line. You stay in the auxiliary lane all the way till you get to 244. Going the other direction, you would again hop on 244, get on 80, again, your same situation where you don't have to merge onto the main line of 80. You end up staying in your own lane and getting off over at Watt Avenue. What's nice about that is during the, during the summer, when the traffic's a little less, you can see that it has fairly minimal delays as you're heading, what I would consider northeast there, Watt and Auburn, your delay would be about one and a half to two minutes, and as opposed to the other direction, it's about a one-minute delay. Now, in order to do this, though, there are a lot of things that have to happen. If I equate this, you know, when you're, when you're going to do this closure, we've just done this on a recent project for the City of Elk Grove, where we closed Bradshaw Road and Sheldon Road for, for the summer, you have to have everything teed up. And I mentioned utilities before because all the utilities would have to be relocated in advance. We would have to have this bid early in the season, a contractor onboard, so that the contractor could start work in March of the year and get, we can complete this in one season. So the advantage and why we're recommending that one season is that it's, from a traffic delay standpoint, it's fairly reasonable delays. It's one year, essentially one season of pain out there versus three years, two to three years, versus the staged construction. Another big reason for this is cost. So, when you're closing this off and allowing contractor to be more efficient with that construction over one season as opposed to two or three, the range is usually about 30 to 50% of savings. In this case, I use the lower end of that range, saying it's about 30% savings. So instead of, say, an $8 million bridge replacement project, we're talking about probably a $5.5 to $6 million bridge replacement project. So there's significant savings with that as well. And those were all the factors that we looked at when looking at the different alternatives on this. Our next steps, as I mentioned, hopefully with some, some feedback from the board supervisors today, we'll hone in on that project description. We'll complete our environmental studies, which is anticipated to be early next year in February. We'll complete our design, and we'll begin the right-of-way acquisition next year as well. The goal would be that we would bid this either in late 2020, early 2021. And a big significant component of this as well is going to be the public outreach. As you know, a major closure like this, we're going to have to do significant outreach. We've already been doing a lot of one-on-one stakeholder meetings out there with folks engaged. There's a hospital in one quadrant. We want to make sure that we're not going to be cutting off emergency access to a hospital. What we found out is most of the things that they do there is outpatient, so they did not have a concern. In fact, they were pretty happy to hear about the improvements at the intersection. We've also reached out to police, fire, to try and ensure that this is not going to create a problem for them. We have not heard any negative feedback on that end. So, we're going to continue our outreach. We've met with Caltrans as well to start initial discussions. There's going to be lots more discussions with them about sending that traffic to the Caltrans facility. We also want to reach out to Citrus Heights, although not directly impacted here at this location, it will impact their residents, and we want to make sure when we do this outreach that we reach out far enough that those folks understand that there's going to be some impacts here at this intersection or through this area. That will, we are going to work on an overall comprehensive outreach plan, and that's going to be worked with, with the county side by side because, as our county partners have told us, that if and when this happens, the phone calls are going to come into the county and the city. And so we certainly want to make sure that everyone's on the same page when it comes to that outreach plan. As I mentioned, our construction schedule, we would like ideally to start in March of 2021, complete this by December 2021. I'm going to put a little asterisk by that, that unless everything is teed up, ready to go, we wouldn't pull the trigger on that because if we don't have all the utilities relocated, if we have, these are risks that would not allow us to complete that during that summer closure. So they would then get pushed to 2022 if we ran into those kinds of things because everything has to be ready to go. The construction schedule during that summer is going to be really tight. So, with that, open to any questions you have.
Supervisor Peters.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I thought it was going to start sooner than that, so that, I feel relieved that we'll have plenty of time to communicate with the people who will be affected here. You may have said it, but I didn't hear it. Is American River College, is that on your list of...
Yes.
Okay, to outreach. And I imagine you'll be doing an outreach plan of some kind? And I would like to have an opportunity to see that before you get, before you finish, before you finish it. And then maybe you can go back to this on your slides. I understood the eastbound and westbound detour plan, but the detour alternative, is that different in some way than these two? They, it looks like you just combined the east and westbound.
What you have in front of you, hopefully, is what's on the screen. There was a little bit of a snafu with the slides that were sent to the board versus what I'm showing you right now. So hopefully, you're not getting, because there were a lot of blank pages on there.
No, I, we got this.
Okay, good.
The westbound, and we got the eastbound.
So they are the same. It's just that, one, as you're heading, as you're heading eastbound, you're just going to hop on there at Watt, and you end up in that little auxiliary lane all the way till you get to the 244 off-ramp. That's the yellow one I'm looking at right now. And then the other direction.
Okay.
It's the same.
Pause just a second, Matt.
Yes, sure.
I wanted to, so they're not both on the freeway? That you said, that little auxiliary lane? Do you mean the one that goes through that neighborhood?
No, there's, you don't actually get onto 80 technically with either of these alternatives because they are.
Technically?
Yeah, technically, right. Because you don't ever have to merge onto the main line because there's the auxiliary lanes on both sides. When you come off 244 onto 80, you can actually stay off of the main line and just get off at Watt Avenue when I'm heading westbound in the red.
Okay.
And then in the yellow, the same thing where you hop onto 80 and you don't, you stay in that right merge lane, you just stay in that all the way till you get to the 244 ramp.
Okay. On the map, it's just, it's kind of in between. It's hard to tell. I was just wondering about the calls from residents that live in that little neighborhood. But then the detour alternative, which should be the next page on your, yeah, so is that different than the previous two?
No, I labeled that incorrectly. It's just really showing them both at the same time combined. And I was just trying to show the different travel time delay differences between those two.
Oh, okay. Yeah. I thought there was, I was looking for something different in there.
I'm sorry. I'm starting to confusion.
For me, this was a very hard one to swallow because of closing the road, but compared to a three-year project and additional expense, that had quite a bit to do with my thoughts about it. It makes sense. It will be very difficult. So I, you know, you're going to have to use all of the communications methods at your, you know, at your disposal to be able to let everybody know. It's a, it's a very difficult place to get through at commute time, so I think people will appreciate it in the end, but it will be painful for at least a year.
Mm-hmm.
So thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I have no cards from the public. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
All right, that ends our timed items. I do have a number of off-agenda speakers, so we'll take those now. Before I do that, let me remind those that are speaking that this is off-agenda, which means generally that the board won't comment because it's not on the agenda and we're not allowed to, but we will listen to your comments and take them into account. I also, I have a number of them that are on, specifically on jail expansion. So I'm going to give like a 30-minute, just kind of groundwork, groundwork so that we're all on the same page that.
How about 30 seconds?
What did I say, 30?
30 minutes.
They're not usually that long.
Well, it did take years of negotiations. Yes, 30 seconds, I'm sorry. Thank you, sir. And so the jail expansion, at this point, is very fluid because we haven't even done the engineering work, the architecture, the, you know, the real down-in-the-dirt, in-the-weeds analysis of what it takes. It's the, the decision was made as a result of negotiations with litigants who were suing the county on behalf of inmates at the jail because of jail conditions. We did mediate and negotiate over a course of about three years, and we came to the decision that there would be expansion. The expansion, as is, and again, this is not in concrete, but this is the general idea. The expansion is to add an annex to the jail across the street in the property that is there. Again, conceptually, none of this is in concrete at this point, conceptually would be something like a three-story facility. And the primary purpose of the facility would be to better serve inmates with mental health problems and to have better facilities for that and programming for inmates with mental health issues. And also to update our intake facility. The current jail was built before ADA was in existence, so therefore is out of compliance with ADA. So it would also improve the intake facility, which would be in compliance with ADA as well as HIPAA and privacy laws that have come into place since the jail was built. So that is the conceptual plan at this point, and that's how we got to where we are. So that kind of lays the groundwork, and I will call the first card, and that's Les Light.
Hi, I'm here speaking on behalf of the Sacramento Tenancy Union. I'm with the organizing team for the Sacramento Tenancy Union and the Joint Organizing Committee of the Sacramento Tenancy Union and the Sacramento Homeless Organizing Committee. So we're fairly alarmed at this. It's just, it's not just a matter of getting money from the state. As we understand it, there's going to be considerable funds diverted from other vital services, particularly in our point of view, housing, in order to facilitate this, but also to maintain and keep it going. You know, all the capacity that this is going to increase. We're particularly, well, we're concerned in that we see constantly the homeless being criminalized and funneled into the criminal justice system and the jails through the, through the sheriff's department. And this looks like it's just sort of increasing and accelerating that process. Now, we have a problem with housing. We're short of housing. The rent keeps going up, and residents who rent, tenants, are being pushed out onto the street. And we know the impact this has on people. We know how this destroys their lives, and they know how this impacts their mental health and their ability to cope. And we see that.
Can you wrap up?
Okay.
Thank you.
The way this is, and the way this ultimately seems to usually be resolved is to criminalize, you know, honest, working people who have been put out on the street. And this jail expansion is just going to be more of that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Robert Copeland. Robert.
I would rather see money go elsewhere than the jail expansion, like housing, healthcare, mental health services, childcare, job training, after-school programs. Why? I mean, why do we need another, an annex to the Maine County Jail? And you're probably going to add on to triple R, triple C. This is wrong. We need more jobs in Sacramento, like job training. I belong to the Sacramento Tenancy Union Poor People's Campaign, and I'm going to tell you, I'm opposed to this plan. As far as, you don't get mental health services in county jail. And this is going to affect the homeless population because you're going to round up more homeless people. The P-bid said crime's going down, 41% in one of the P-bid districts? And I'm probably sure the other P-bids are saying the same thing. So why do we need an addition to the county jail? Thank you.
It's difficult for people to hear their name called if there's applause, just so you know.
I want to start off by saying that the diversity in front of me is overwhelming. During item 40, I heard a lot of verbiage regarding displacing the neediest amongst us as a success, placing fences in the way of humans as a success, criminalizing and funneling people into an already overcrowded and decrepit jail as a success. How much does this success cost us? And I do mean us, because we pay for it while you condone it. See, the funny thing about poverty is you can't arrest it away. You have to fund it away. The safest neighborhoods in Sacramento don't have the most police in them. They have the most resources in them, particularly in the form of capital and home ownership. I would bet cash money there's a strong inverse correlation between home ownership and police presence in most of the neighborhoods in this county. See, my overall experience with this county is a helicopter that inexplicably doesn't turn its light on over the Meadowview neighborhood, a cyclone fence around a public building, and a sheriff who locks out his only oversight, literally locks the door. And you want to give this person more money? How and why? You want to take $80 million with a bunch of strings attached from the state that we're going to have to pay for later to fund the literal problem? The problem is the county jail. So you're going to take money away from services to fund the problem further? Why don't you nip it in the bud? See, where I come from, if you mess something up, you got to pay for it. So how come every time the sheriff messes up, we have to pay for it? How come he doesn't pay for it out of his budget, his retirement, his people's salary? Why do we need so many county sheriff deputies if we can't even take care of the people they're arresting? That makes zero sense. See, there's an old Greek verbiage that says a great society is one in which old men plant trees they'll never know the shade of. Whatever you're doing is the fucking opposite of that.
Mackenzie Wilson.
I stand before you terrified. I'm terrified of the current state of my community and of the directions in which you are taking us. I'm seeing a rise in fascism and that you are literally a direct arm of it. What we know is that criminalization doesn't work. We see it literally, we see that it literally ruins lives. We see that it perpetuates the poverty cycle. We see that it perpetuates mental health crisis. It perpetuates our unhoused crisis, and the criminalization of folks who live outside is a waste of taxpayer dollars. I wanted to emphasize that one more time. Patrick Kennedy. It perpetuates the very systematic mechanisms that diminish the people's access to opportunity. I'm in awe that our city is moving towards a jail expansion for a fascist like Scott Jones who's gone rogue. A jail expansion when we see the need for affordable housing and access to mental health services. Yet we're seeing a cut to all community services across the board by at least 15% to help with this expansion, and that doesn't even take into account the money needed to upkeep the jail after the expansion is done. What we know is that half of the population in this jail are unconvicted in dealing with mental health crisis and not being housed crisis. So why are we talking jail expansions when what we should be talking about is housing and mental health facilities that need to be staffed with actual mental health staff, not sheriffs? I will be, oh, cool, I've got 20 seconds. We are aware of the bond money, and we demand that you say no to it. We don't want jail money here like that here in Sacramento. And any upgrades made to these facilities due to lawsuits that we are paying for needs to have more community oversight, and you're looking at a group of knowledgeable ass folks that want to be a part of, that are demanding to be a part of that process. That's about it for me today. So I look forward to hearing from you all.
Thank you. Courtney Hanson.
My name's Courtney Hanson. I live and am from here in Sacramento. I also do volunteer with the Californians United for Responsible Budgets, so I know about the BSDC. I'd go to their meetings. I was part of stopping SB 1022 and ensuring that this type of bond money doesn't continue to show up in our communities, and I would look forward to talking to you more about that. These expansion plans are about one thing, in my opinion, which is a defeatist position that accepts that the only money available to invest in our communities is jail money. Expanding the jail is a decision, it is not inevitable, to further destabilize vulnerable communities, and I genuinely ask you 10 years from now, do you want this to be your legacy? 60 to 75% of the population is pre-trial. Many just can't afford bail. Over 50% of the people in jail have been diagnosed with mental illness, and if you don't have it when you go in, there's a good chance you will get it from being in the jail. Black people make up 37% of the jail population and less than 11% of county residents. How is that so? This is not about safety. It is about using jails as a catch-all solution to our social and economic problems, and the effects are devastating. People are not rehabilitated. They have to desperately rehabilitate themselves from the experience of incarceration. Sometimes people ask me, how did I get involved in this work? Well, in 2010, I spent a night in Sacramento County Jail, and I have been involved in this work ever since. Jail is the worst thing I have ever experienced or seen. I was not surprised by what I read in the lawsuit. One of the plaintiffs of the lawsuit allegedly spent nearly eight years in solitary confinement, 23 hours or more in a small cell every day, experiencing auditory hallucinations, deep in depression, severe anxiety, suicidal thoughts, and vitamin D deficiency. I asked myself when I left in 2010 from one night, what does this place actually do to people? It is dark. Have any of you ever been to jail? Do you know what it's like to be forcibly isolated? Sheriff Scott Jones says the new Jailbird series is real and raw. It's his own disgusting fantasy of what he oversees. There is nothing real about that exploitative series. If you want to know what's real, hang out in front of the jail. I've been working with people for seven years, currently and formerly incarcerated. If you want to know what jails really do to people.
Can you wrap up?
The $80 million coming from SB 1022 is not free money. We urge you to consider a different legacy for yourselves and for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Asantea Boykin.
Hello, my name is Asantea, and I'm a registered nurse. Our healthcare system has and continues to absorb this county's inadequate housing, sorry, phone call, inadequate housing, family, and mental health services. From the houseless folks that sleep in our waiting rooms to discharging folks who are desperately trying to get clean because the programs for poor people are either impacted or nonexistent. All the while, MHSA has over $1 million that they need to spend by June 2020. We cannot police and incarcerate our way out of public health crises. Rather, those crises look like mental health crises, overpolicing of marginalized communities, or a housing crisis. Cutting monies from health and family services and eliminating social workers is not only inhumane but also irresponsible. If there are cuts that need to be made, I hope they're made from your salaries. As a healthcare professional and a mother and a resident of this county, I ask the Sacramento County reject the $80 million for the jail expansion and that our citizens not lose valuable services to pay for the inhumane conditions that exist in your jails. It has been proven in brave states like Oregon and also internationally that health-focused rehabilitation is effective. It decreases recidivism, homelessness, addiction, and crime. This current system is not working. Let us be an example of how to fix it instead of just expanding it. And also in addition, while we're talking about mental health in jails, I've seen the way your sheriffs treat people that are trying to get help in the hospital. They sit there, they hit on nurses, they drink coffee, they Facebook, they minimize inmates' complaints. They're in pain, and yet they remain chained to a gurney with two armed people standing there? That is inhumane, and I imagine if they brazenly treat folks that way in public, I can only imagine how they treat them inside prison walls.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm a primary care physician, and I take care of patients with substance use disorders, which is what brings me here today. I'm also a piperorphine and suboxone prescriber. If you guys aren't familiar with this medication, it's a part of medication-assisted treatment that along with methadone and eltrexone can be used to treat opioid use disorder. Everyone's Everyone's heard that opioid use disorder is on the rise, and in the jail, almost two-thirds of folks have a substance use disorder. The good news is, as we know, that we have life-saving medications to help patients with opioid use disorders. There's study after study after study that shows that these medicines save lives, prevent overdose, and improve the quality of people's lives. Not only do they, yeah, not only do they help them, but they save their lives. And just to put it in perspective, so the long-term mortality associated with opioid use disorder, compared to that with a person who has a heart attack. If you have a heart attack right now, in the next 10 years, you're twice as likely to die than someone who has not had a heart attack before. If you have an opioid use disorder, you're five to 50 times more likely to die. And so, that is what we're looking at here. Medication-assisted treatment is standard of care, it's supported by all the major medical organizations, all the major addiction organizations, and even the National Sheriffs Association and the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare. So this is all the great information that we have. The bad news is that these medicines aren't offered at the Sacramento County Jail. And instead, patients there are forced to withdraw in painful, dire circumstances off opioid medications. They're not given any help, they're not given help when they're in jail, they're not given help when they're out of jail. And they're not given access to this life-saving medication. And so, this is all to say, no one's getting well there in that jail. They're only getting worse, and they're being made sick.
Thank you. Nikki Jones.
My name is Nikki. A lot of what I focus on is the human and civil rights of people who live outside. This includes, let's see, I'm also a street outreach worker. A street outreach worker relies on building rapport to improve access to a range of options to improve the quality of life for people. This includes people experiencing all spectrums of mental wellness. I have serious concerns, as well as others here, about this much money pouring into criminal justice-based into criminal justice-based mental health services and, I'm sorry, at a time when so many other services are being cut. We have a firm belief that significant investment in county and community-based mental health treatment and intervention would go a long way in curbing the sheriff's department's need to house these individuals to begin with. Incarceration rates and access to diversion or mental health treatment while incarcerated are still all shamefully racially biased in their implementation, certainly by the sheriff's department, but also by all elements of county court systems. My own experience also leads me to believe in the urgent need to invest in community solutions and achieve mental wellness for Sacramento County residents and take our loved ones out of the hands of Scott Jones and these abusive conditions. In a mental health crisis downtown for hours after a week of building anxiety led to a lack of sleep, food, and water, increasing hallucination, paranoia, when my friends arrived to take me home or to the hospital, SACPD intervened, the impact team sent me to SAC County Jail, and as the five officers tackle me, put their hands on me, struggle me all the way there to booking, put the mesh bag over my head, tackle me down, throw me in my cell, and leave me there for hours. When my delusions had finally stopped raging and existed instead as quiet terror, finally sitting head down on my knees, many hours into captivity in SAC County Holding Cell, my mental health referral finally came, I think at least, hard to tell when you're delusional. A group of people came to the door, mostly sheriff's officers, and asked if I needed anything. Then several hours later, the deputies came in, lifted me out the door, down the hall, and onto I Street, struggling against their touch and still completely outside of shared reality. At 3:30, at 3:30, at 3:30 AM, I've got two more sentences, at 3:30 AM, they threw my property bag out after my body. Thank all gods for friends who were there again when no system could be, not even the light rail. Can I ask you honestly, sincerely, should we keep investing in this? We know the bid on the $89 million has already been pushed back more than once. Let's cancel it and have a different conversation altogether.
Liam Smith. Liam Smith.
Good morning. I am an activist with Sacramento Tenants Union, I'm an organizer. I echo pretty much all of the concerns that have been brought to you guys today. I just want to point out a couple of examples of the root issue here, which is really overpolicing. While you're funding this budget, at the same time, you're cutting five positions in your homeless outreach team. So it seems like you're funding to deal with treating the symptoms and not the root cause there. Another thing that I want to point out is that, I think earlier this year, it took a national court order to get us to stop ticketing people who were camping by the river, and the police's response to that was, "It's okay, we'll find ways around it." You know, basically, they were openly admitting to wanting to overpolice and finding other ways to ticket those people for offenses. So that seems like a large influx of people going to the jail that really don't need to be there. Another thing that I want to point out is the example at Stockton and Fruit Ridge. Sacramento Tenants Union was working with homeless people in Stockton and Fruit Ridge. SHRA has told us that they are going to, you know, build a new project on that site forever. They haven't, and people have flocked there because it's open land and they can build a community. When they organized a tenants' union with us, literally like two, three days later, police came and bashed skulls and confiscated property, and the same night that they exiled all of those people from what had become their home, a woman was raped, right? So clearly, clearly, there's no good solution that comes from this ridiculous overpolicing, and it's exacerbating this problem. Finally, the last thing that I want to say, this lawsuit that all of these changes are supposed to be stemming from, comes from realignment. And the goal of realignment was to bring low-level offenders back down into the community, evaluate them, and bring them back into our community, not into our jails. So it makes much more sense to me to develop rehabilitation programs, develop services for these people instead of have them sit in the jails and rot and wait for judgment for years and years and do nothing productive. Thank you.
Thank you. Cassidy Payne.
Hi there, how y'all doing today? I wanted to ask you how you were doing before I started speaking, because I didn't know if you guys were still awake or not. I see a lot of valuable community members out here today. I'm not with any particular outreach program, I'm just a concerned citizen. I see a lot of this money going towards a really shitty purpose. And I see a lot of really stony faces in front of me, and I'm disappointed to be so proud of where I live, to be so proud of where I grew up, and all I'm being met with are brick walls. All four of you that bothered to show up today should be horrified at the stories you've heard, at the testimonies you've heard. You should be horrified at the thought of putting Sacramento's children in jail someday. Not everybody that's in Sacramento County prison is covered in tattoos and has three murder convictions. Some of them just smoked a little weed, some of them are just traffic convictions. Most of them are still legally presumed innocent. And most of them are children. Most of them are still emotionally what you and I would consider children, people younger than us, people who made one mistake that's going to follow them around for the rest of their lives. I grew up in Folsom. When I used to drive up Iron Point with my mom, she would point towards Folsom High School and say, "That's the school you're going to go to someday." When I hear about your three-story theoretical jail building, all I can think of is looking at the children of the city and saying, "As soon as you graduate high school, as soon as you fuck up just a little bit, there you go, there you're going to be someday." It's a fucking death sentence. Even if you get out of jail, even if you get out of this horrible, horrible place we've created, God only knows what's going to happen to you after. You might still be homeless, you might have a horrible time finding a job, and you might end up right back in jail, which is what happens to most of our minorities in this county. They go right back into the same system that held them captive. You should be horrified and you should be ashamed of yourselves if you even think about taking this money. The people of your county are begging you to do what's right and what's just. Take their advice.
Liz Blum.
Thanks for this super convenient meeting, though.
I think we pulled out one place, you had this whole meeting today, you might want to listen.
Hi, my name is Liz Blum, and I'm here as a community member, as a graduate student, a loved one of currently incarcerated people, and as a sister of someone who struggles with mental illness that has been exacerbated by county jails. The first time my brother was locked in a cage, he was 19 years old. Sorry, can I get my time back?
I've been letting everybody go over so.
Okay, thank you. While he was experiencing a severe mental health crisis, my mom attempted to bail him out of jail, and when she visited him, he held up a piece of paper to the glass that asked, "Thank you." Also hearing my friends talk is like, ooh. He held up a piece of paper to the glass that asked for someone to contact his mom for him. So obviously, not of sound enough mind to communicate his needs when he was locked in a cage for 15 days. I wish I could forget the stories of his time there. So it's also important to recognize, as has been said before, that if one is not already experiencing challenges with mental wellness, the trauma of being locked in jail is more than likely to cause mental illness. Three years later, I can say that his time in jail has severely traumatized him and left him with lasting effects on his mental illness. In addition to costing my working-class mother thousands of dollars, there's no possible scenario where my brother could have received any type of lasting mental health treatment while in county jail. And there's no possible scenario where the sheriff's department is qualified to provide that treatment and healing. While your plans to implement mental health programs in Sacramento County jails means well, I think you guys actually probably think you're doing maybe a good thing, it's actually severely misguided. No one can get well in county jail. Before moving forward with this jail plan, we ask you to do a community impact report. It's critical into determining how this expansion will affect our community here in Sacramento, not just people who have experienced incarceration, but their loved ones. We must prioritize spending public dollars towards strengthening our community-based programs and human services instead of cutting them. And we, in order to have true public safety, we must meet the basic needs of every single person in our community.
Dan Aderhold.
Hi, I'm Dan Aderhold, executive board member of the City of Nataomas Community Association and head of the Homeless Committee in Nataomas. I came here for a different reason, but I'm pretty appalled by what I am hearing right now. I want to thank these people for standing up for what they believe in and speaking against this, because I happen to agree with them. But I'm here about AB 137, Patrick Kennedy, Ms. Frost, Ms. Peters. This law is attacking us, my American River homeless crew, and fellow homeless people on the American River that you guys are trying to pass, oh no, you guys are in general, but it's like I said in the past, you guys are going against veterans, or fellow veterans who fought for our country. They're in my crew, they're 73%, they're not drug addicts. I'm so sick and tired of people comparing homeless people to drug addicts. There's so many homeless people out here who are not drug addicts. They are the same as you and me, they lost their job, I mean, they, there's a thousand reasons why people are homeless, okay? And I don't want to preach because I don't have much time, but what I'm saying though is, I'm fighting against this law being passed because it's against, boy's versus Martin case, you guys may change the words, but it's still, it's the same, you guys cannot do that, it's already been found unconstitutional by the Supreme Court of the United States. By saying you guys can't, and I can't, but I have accurate shelters. And speaking of shelters, where are these shelters that are supposed to be built? Well, I'd like to know. I love working with you guys, I work with Park and Recreation, cleaning up the area, but so far, you guys are, all I see is another attack on the homeless committee. And my homeless crew deserve more respect than that, they're not drug addicts, they're normal as you and me. They're just trying to make the best of the situation they're in. And we're trying, and we're working with them 24 hours a day and seven days a week out of my own pocket on for, and it's with the help of next-door members. I spent over, what, $103,000 of my own money to save the American River, and we saved the American River without Park and Recreation because they had no funding to do it back then, you guys know this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. Gill, can you please have Natasha Drain send board members information on AB 137?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Lynn Berkeley Baskin.
Good morning. Again, I'm Lynn Berkeley Baskin, I am a community member, I live in Folsom. I serve on many boards of directors as trustee and board member, also on committees, I'm also grassroots advocate. I'd like to first echo all of the people sitting here today who have been forthright in their experience, and they've given you data. I don't know if you've actually looked at the data they've given you. And I would say that, I would like to challenge two things. One, is your motivation. Your motivation for building and expanding our criminal justice facilities, because they're not just. So I don't know what the motivation is, but I think that's something that it has to be talked about in the community and with you. And that opportunity hasn't happened. Second, the process. There has been, to my knowledge, on the site, no cost-benefit analysis, no racial impact analysis, no community impact analysis. If you really are looking for safer area and safer communities and healthier communities, that has to be done by doing the analysis at the front end. I don't see any analyses, none, except for cost. I see cost, but I don't see any benefits. And I don't hear anybody telling us any benefits because we know, if we're really looking at this intellectually by the data, we know there is no benefit. There is no benefit, so we're really responding from a place of fear and emotion. And that's not really helpful. We really have to look at the data, and I suggest that, I probably, raise hands if you're willing to do research for the Board of Supervisors. You have a whole team ready to go. So thank you so much for hearing us today, and I really hope you consider not accepting the $89 million. It's appalling that you would be complicit in making a system worse. Especially when you've invested in RACD and BCLC, how does that, that's so inconsistent. So please, please, look at, look at how you're making decisions. It's unwise, and it doesn't, certainly doesn't include the community. Thank you.
Henry Ortiz.
How are you guys doing? My name is Henry Ortiz, I'm a community organizer and a formerly incarcerated individual who just got out about a year and a half ago after spending 18 years of my life in there. So as far as the traumas and the things that happened in there, I'm going to save you the time. Do note that the Department of Corrections has more prisons than the whole country put together, and there's a lawsuit, a federal lawsuit on the department based on the medical issues, and that's in the department because the department grew so big. And that's kind of what I'm seeing, we're getting ready to feed a big monster. I wish that you would have consulted with your community before you guys started making these agreements with these folks about building prisons. So let me just kind of give you some key points why I think it's a bad idea. One, three-quarters of Sacramento's entire budget goes to maintaining criminal justice system, mostly to the sheriff's department. Two, 60 to 75% of the jail population have not been sentenced, they are waiting for a trial for months or years. Three, over 50% of the people in jail have been diagnosed with mental health illnesses. People with mental health illnesses also spend most of their time in solitary confinement in the jails. And it says also 50% of the people charged with misdemeanors are experiencing homelessness. Black people make up 30% of the people in jail, right? Just some key points to consider. Five, when people are held in jail waiting for trial, they lose their jobs. You know, custody with their children, access to medical. So when these people come back home, they're homeless, right? I mean, we're doing them a disservice. Many people with mental health illness cycle in and out of Sacramento County Jail over and over again without ever getting the treatment they need, right? Seven, all over the Seven, all over the country, the county and state systems, they have reduced their incarceration rates by 30, 40, and 50 percent simultaneously have reduced crime rates. Eight, many of the people with mental health illnesses, substance abuse disorders who are homeless in jail can, can be served better in safer communities if we reinvest. How about we take that money and invest it in housing and, and trauma therapy and, and just food? A lot of these brothers are hungry. Have you been to South Sacramento? I served in that community, and it's scattered all over the parking lots ever since they did that, that raid on Fruit Ridge and Sacramento. So, these are some things I really gotta, gotta consider. I mean, whose communities are we keeping safe? The rich communities or the hood communities, right? When my, when my car gets broken into, I can't be mad because if I was in that predicament, I'm hungry. My, 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 my system's not doing anything for me, my country's not doing anything, so I have to do what I gotta do. Sorry, but I gotta, I gotta, I gotta eat, you know? And that's what we're, we've been experiencing in South Sacramento. Let's, let's work on helping here our communities, work with us, right? We'll support you, you know what I mean? And so, just real quick, you know, just, just like our community organizers shut down the plans to build more, more county jails in LA and San Francisco, our intention is going to shut this out. So, either you work with us or against us, but we're going to work this out. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. That is the final card I have. Thank you all for being here, thank you for your passion, and I can speak behalf of everybody here, we would more than love to make a comment right now, but unfortunately, we cannot. So, that being said, we have a little more time to do appointments.
Item 47. We are continuing to August 20th the Sacramento Environmental Commission and the Sheriff's Outreach Community Advisory Board for Carmichael Recreation and Park District, Supervisor Peters.
Yes, I'd like to nominate and reappoint Byron Borman to the Carmichael Recreation and Park District.
Okay. Developmental Disabilities Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Kennedy.
Chief recommend nominating Bonnie Douglas to the professional seat of the Developmental Disabilities Planning Advisory Council and continue the remainder to August 20th.
Disability Advisory Commission.
Chiefs recommend continuing to August 20th.
Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Kennedy.
District 1 reappoints Jamie Cutlip to the Natomas Planning Advisory Council and please continue the remainder until August 20th.
And Sacramento County Youth Commission, Supervisor Kennedy.
Continued August 20th.
And Peters.
Continued August 6th.
Supervisor Frost.
Please nominate Vishruth Nega and waive the process, please. Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present, and Supervisor Natoli.
Continued August 20th.
And that concludes your nominations.
All right, then we do have closed session.
Yes, we do.
So, we will stand at recess.
Supervisor Frost.
Here.
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 Here. Thank you.
Okay. So, we held item four from the consent calendar. This has authorized the chair to sign a general indemnity agreement allowing the Hartford Financial Services Group to underwrite a surety bond in the amount of $53,402,501 to stay the judgment in the case of Joseph Hardesty and others versus Sacramento Air Quality Management District and others.
Mr. Gill.
Members of the board, this is an item that we held from this morning, we just wanted to explain briefly what this item does, is that it allows us to get a bond for $53-million. The cost for this bond is $200,000 a year. While we're doing the appeal on the case, our recommendation is for the chair to sign this for us to have the bond secured. And we do have our chief financial officer if you need any other details.
Thank you. Any questions with the board?
Just one question, Mr. Chair, if I could. So, in our budget liberations, in the approved budget, we had $1-million set aside for the litigation potential settlement. Is this additional amount, then, the $200,000, is that credited against that $1-million, or is that $1-million set aside remain, and then this is additional $200,000?
We are going to, it's against the $1-million that we set aside.
It is.
And we will continue to set that money aside for the.
Right, you're going to come back in subsequent years, I get that, but for this year's purpose, for this year's budgeting, you will take the $200,000 to secure this bond from that $1-million that's already been set aside.
Our request is not for any additional budget money, we've already budgeted for it.
All right, thanks.
Okay, any other questions, comments? I have no clips from the public. Is there a motion?
Move the item.
Second.
Motion, a second, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Forty-three.
Item 42 is the Squirrel Monkey Haven and Appeal Fee Waiver. Request for a waiver of fees for an appeal of the zoning administrator approval of a use permit located at 11859 North Valanson Road in the Southeast Community. Chairman, I want to point out that if there are people here that want to address the board, they need to do an oath. And I can do that now, if you'd like.
Okay, are there any members of the public that are going to speak on this item? If you'll please stand, you need to be sworn. And when you come to the podium, please state your name and that you have been sworn.
Okay, please raise your right hand in the appropriate response as I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, so help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm? And when you get to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn.
Couldn't have said it better myself.
Good afternoon, members of the board, LeAnn Moffett, the county planning director. Now, the item before you today is a request by Dawn and Xena Claunch for a waiver of appeal fees. Just as a little bit of background, on March 23rd, 2018, Dawn and Xena Claunch filed an appeal contesting the approval of a use permit that was issued by the county zoning administrator for a kennel facility to hold 55 squirrel monkeys on five acres at 11859 North Valanson Road. The cost of that appeal that they paid was $4,138 to be heard by the board. The basis for the appeal were two items. One, that a negative declaration had been prepared under the California Environmental Quality Act rather than a full environmental impact report, and secondly, that the use was not allowed under the zoning code. The appeal was considered by the board on two occasions, on May 8th, 2018, and June 19th, 2018. At the June 19th board hearing, the board granted the appeal only as it related to the adequacy of the California Environmental Quality Act document, the fact that an EIR had not been prepared. And then, at the request of the applicant's attorney, not the appellant's, but the applicant for the squirrel monkeys, who had agreed to prepare an EIR, the board directed that an EIR be prepared. That EIR has been prepared and was released in March of 2019, and the actual merits of the item will be scheduled before the board at an upcoming, very soon, board hearing. So, you will be seeing that item. In April of 2019, Dawn and Xena Claunch requested a waiver of their original appeal fees on the basis that an EIR was ultimately prepared. Staff has determined that there was no staff error, and therefore, it would not be appropriate to approve that at the staff level, and we've forwarded the item to the board. We are recommending denial of the fee waiver on the basis that there wasn't a staff error. Also, that staff continues to believe that the negative declaration was an appropriate SEQA document, and that significant costs were incurred particularly as related to processing the appeal, which staff has estimated, with all the meetings involved, have been upwards of around $30,000. So, that concludes the staff presentation. I'd be available if you have any questions, and I would also note, we do have Dawn and Xena Claunch, who are requesting the fee waiver, in the audience.
And I do have cards from them in, so Supervisor Natoli.
Yes, thanks. Thanks, LeAnn, and I know we'll hear from Dawn and Xena Claunch in a moment, but a couple of questions. One, the, well, actually, kind of a comment, because when I briefed with you, the, it was, comment I made to you was that this was based upon the appeal, was the only way under our current structure in the zoning code that this could come before the board of supervisors. The zoning administrator was the designated hearing body, and, and had, they chose another route, they would have only taken this to the board of zoning appeals, which would have been the planning commission. Could you tell me what the cost of that appeal would have been from the zoning administrator to the BZA?
I believe it's in the $3,000 range to go to the BZA for a project appeal. It's four, it's $4,000, it's very close to the cost.
Very close to this, it would have been the same cost. But, but they had no other route. In order to get this before the board, assuming they could make the case, they or anybody else in this case, if you had a similar set of circumstances, then the only way that they could properly get it before us was to file the appeal and pay the fee, that's correct?
Had they appealed on the basis solely of the project merits, yes, that would have gone to the board of zoning appeals, and that cannot be further appealed to the board. When they appealed on the basis of the merits of the SEQA document, that provides a path for the board. And then, because of the threat of a potential lawsuit, that's why the applicant's attorney then agreed to incur the costs of preparing a full AIR on the basis that, that the original applicant's attorney felt that that was more defensible if it ended up going to court.
The, the, the fact that they, they chose that process, well, we never really, we heard the project, I guess, in a sense, but we never decided the merits of it because, again, this time last year, as you just noted, the applicant's attorney on behalf of the Buckmasters made the decision to go, you know, go back and do a full environmental document. It was interesting because, one of the things, and again, you know, I certainly want to hear from the Claunches, that was pointed out, though, in the communication that came, and I went back and reread this again last evening, again, actually, this afternoon, was, you know, recognizing all the testimony, and again, we're not getting into that detail, obviously, we have a fee waiver request before us, but that in the communication that came from the council for the proponents, from the Buckmasters, said that, that they were informing the county, and it was embodied in the staff report that you only brought forward, that was approved by this board to go forward with the EIR, preparation of the EIR, says they wish to inform you of our intent and desire to prepare an environmental impact report with regards to this project. As such, we support the appellant's substantive request in their appeal. And I think part of what I've read, and again, I'm going to link that back, I'm expecting necessarily to, to weigh in on this, but that, in the Claunch's appeal, although I'm not so sure that it's 100-percent accurate in the way it's portrayed, that it was basically that they had to get this to the, the board, they paid the fund, the fee to do that, obviously, secured an attorney to do that, made the arguments, and that, based on that, ultimately, certainly, the applicant made a decision, but this board approved that, and that was, that there should be further environmental review. Now, again, staff has taken a position, as you did previously, very consistent, that preparation of a negative declaration was the appropriate document from the staff perspective. The Claunches and other neighborhood folks argued that there were other impacts, that those should be weighed out in a, in a, in a more thorough format, I guess, and, and therefore, the applicant chose, again, and presented this board, that's the action we took. So, I just wanted to point that out again, it's not inconsistent with what's in the staff report, but again, as I read the material from the Claunch's appeal, certainly going back to the staff report that was prepared in June, recognizing, obviously, that environmental document has been prepared, it goes into a more thorough investigation of some of the issues that were raised, it may come to the same conclusions, and ultimately, this board will obviously hear that matter in the next, next few weeks, I guess, as soon as maybe next week, as I understand it. So, okay, I just wanted to be clear on those points. Thanks.
Thank you. Any others? All right, then, we will hear from the Claunches. Dawn Claunch.
Mr. Chair, I don't know, again, I know we have a, you know, a certain time limitation, I don't know what, how much time they need, but I certainly would ask that they be given a few minutes to make their presentation.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not even starting the clock.
Okay, I just didn't know, okay, thanks.
I'm Dawn Claunch, and I've been sworn in. Trust me, this will be very brief because I'm not a real good speaker. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this afternoon. We are seeking a waiver of our appeal fees based upon the fact we were successful in requiring the EIR. Once the EIR was completed, the information generated by this document provided information to not only the board, but also the public. The information contained in the EIR has proven to be satisfactory for the project, and we have chosen not to challenge it and have since relocated to a new residence. It is unfortunate that we have had to bear the extremely high cost of this appeal fee, but we did not consider the project viable without execute, without everyone executing due diligence in this matter. We are convinced that had we not appealed the initial decision, neither the board nor the public would have been fully aware of the impact this project brought with it. Therefore, we are asking for a waiver of our appeal fees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn.
And Xena Claunch.
I don't have anything to add, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I have no other cards, so we'll bring it back to the board, discussion, Supervisor Frost.
I have a question for LeAnn. My understanding is that when someone files for an appeal, there's documentation and a clearance, there's, there is no guarantee that they'll get a refund on their money if they win the appeal versus lose the appeal, is that correct? Or, how does it work? What kind of notification upfront do they receive?
I don't, they fill out a form and they file it out with the clerk of the board's office, and I, I don't believe that there's any expectation that they're going to necessarily get the money back. I mean, essentially, it's a contribution towards the cost of holding a hearing and preparing the materials and everything involved. So, they are required to pay a fee and, and told that, that that's the cost of filing the appeal. The only folks who really have a, right now, have the option of a free appeal would be the Community Planning Advisory Council. In this case, the local Community Planning Advisory Council had recommended approval of the project, and so, it didn't bump away from the zoning administrator to the planning commission, and there was no path through the CPAC for that community-wide interest appeal because of the CPAC original recommendation for approval.
Thank you, that's all I have right now.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And as I kind of noted my questions to LeAnn, I'm, you know, certainly reflecting on this, and I think that, you know, there's something key in what was said by LeAnn responding to Supervisor Frost, and that was this kind of community-wide interest as it related to this, this matter, and certainly, I think all of us as board members learned more about this topic, and obviously, we're going to weigh in on it when it comes before us as soon as next week. And it did, I think, provide, you know, significant opportunity for not only discussion, but to learn about what was being proposed. It's not a, a very ordinary request, certainly wild animal keeping, we have a few facilities, certainly a couple notable ones in the southern part of the county, and this, you know, again, is, there was, I think, noted, made that it was akin to a cattery or to a kennel, dog kennel, at least as related to zoning code determination. That was actually part of the appeal that was made, at least that was pointed out in the letters, a council on behalf of the Claunches. And so, as I've, you know, reflected on this, that, you know, there's this issue about staff error, and I don't see a staff error, but there's also other special circumstances that would justify consideration of a waiver, and I think certainly Supervisor Frost raises a point that, you know, there should be no expectation of getting a, a fee waived or necessarily returned. But I do think this case, that it's certainly brought to, to the forefront, and albeit, obviously, the applicants and even staff may have seen it differently than those that argued on behalf of the appeal, or maybe even members of this board, and a tremendous amount of time was devoted to it, there's no, no doubt about that. But I was, the other point I wanted to make, and it's something that is in the context, obviously, of discussions we've had about what it actually costs versus people having the opportunity to, to bring matters to this body, the elected body of this county, and to hear matters, big or small, and, you know, when it comes down to thousands of dollars for the general citizenry, that is a barrier, and recognizing that we have a fiduciary responsibility through the general fund to, you know, try to recover costs, and, and I would just say, I say that because $4,000 to get a matter, and they had to use a route that was a little circuitous, albeit very appropriate, to get this matter before the board. And so, I think upon further reflection, at least in, in my view, and again, I think that, I'm going to fall back to this, special circumstances in the sense that I think that we learned a lot as a board, and we still have to make a decision on this, it can be forced, we've retained that at this level. I don't see a staff error, but I also do see a community-wide discussion that was important. A lot of neighbors weighed in, some in support of what the Claunch's appeal brought forward, but also all the others who may have seen it differently, as well as a broader community that were interested in animal welfare and such. And so, I think based upon those circumstances, in the sense that I think that we learned in animal welfare and such. And so, I think based upon those circumstances, I'd be prepared to support the return of the appeal fee. And I would also offer, though, that in event this, my fellow Board members don't see that, that I would be willing to step up with some of the neighborhood monies from District Five to do this. I think that this was an extraordinary set of circumstances, and one again, that still hasn't been determined by this Board, but this isn't just an appeal on somebody's desire to want to split their property. This actually was one where I think we gained knowledge through the process. The environmental document documents some of the issues that were raised at the time relative to safety, to interface between wild animals and their handlers, as well as the general public. And I think, as Mr. Clutch said in his testimony, obviously, that information is now out there for all the public, for this Board, and for the general public, as well as, obviously, the applicants who will be before us and have that presented properly. And it is in more detail, I've looked at the environmental document, I haven't read it from cover to cover, it does go into additional detail on the issues that were before this Board when we talked about it last spring or last summer. So, I'm prepared under the guise of, I think, a special circumstance and a broader community-wide discussion that was important for this, and maybe even for, as a precedent to other discussions that we have about keeping of wild animals in areas in the county where there may be concerns about that versus, you know, neighborhood, other neighborhood considerations. And so, for those reasons, I'm prepared to support the waiver, but I would also offer, as I said, if there's not agreement by my colleagues to support the waiver, and I would dedicate the neighborhood funds from District Five to cover that, the cost of return of the appeal fee.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost.
Is that something that can be done? Can you use neighborhood funds for something like that?
I'm actually not sure where the guidelines are. I think it's for a community project.
Without seeing the guidelines, I don't.
If you can give us about five minutes to look at the guidelines.
We'll take a five-minute recess.
Can you find that? Yeah.
Okay, we're back in session. We are actually going to hold over item, that item, and go to item 43 while we work on a solution to that.
Okay. For item 43, it requires an oath as well. This is for the Jevon Shell Food Mart, a Use Permit Amendment and Design Review to allow 24-hour operations for an existing automobile service station and convenience store in the general commercial zoning district for a property located at 7149 South Watt Avenue, and this is in the Vineyard Community. And the environmental determination is a negative declaration. If anyone's here, they'll need to get sworn in. Okay, please raise your right hand in the appropriate response as I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this Board is the truth? So, help you God. If you do not swear, do you so affirm? Okay, and when you get to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement. I have been sworn.
Ms. Moffett.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. LeAnn Moffett, your planning director, and I do have a PowerPoint on this item. So, this is the Jevon Shell Food Mart. It is an existing service station located in the Vineyard Community at 7149 South Watt Avenue at the northeast corner of South Watt and Florin Road. The current operation has, was permitted via use permit, and the request is to amend the use permit so that they can continue to operate the existing automobile service station and convenience store on a 24-hour basis. And we've also thrown in design review since we weren't doing that back when the project originally went through the process. So, as background, the Board approved the service station project in June of 1999 for a primary automobile service station, a 24-hour convenience market, a quick-serve restaurant, and a car wash. And one of the conditions on the original project, in part because the area wasn't very well built out, the community plan wasn't done yet, and it hadn't really been figured out what might be immediately surrounding this area, was for a 10-year sunset on the 24-hour operation of the service station and convenience store. So, that actually expired in June of 2009, and it was only recently during one of the business license reviews that our staff went through the details of that original use permit and actually caught the, found Condition 23, which takes a little bit of digging to find, and realized that there was an issue. Then we approached the owners, and they've come in for the use permit amendment. And I will, we will point out that the service station was essentially constructed by 2000. We've scanned in the original exhibit. You can see what they look like back in 1999, a little more rustic back then, so that's the original layout, and the site does conform to this layout. Here are some photos showing the canopy and the landscaping on-site, as well as some of the signage. There are no physical changes proposed to the existing structures or signage, or essentially, there's nothing physical changing on the site. County code standards have changed in the ensuing years, however, because there are no physical changes, they're considered existing non-conforming with regard to the built environment, and we're not trying to seek to have them modify the physical appearance to meet current code standards. The existing use has been in operation for 18 years, and for this, we did an initial study, negative declaration. Because they were approaching the county to amend the use permit conditions, that has actually provided us the opportunity to ask for a couple of changes to their existing conditions, so I wanted to go through those. Starting off with Condition Number 15, previously, they were allowed to sell alcohol until midnight, and so, we are asking now that they cut that off at 10:00 PM. The car wash facility previously had hours of operation between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM, and we are asking to narrow that down from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And in exchange, they would be allowed to continue the 24-hour operation of the service station and convenience store, otherwise, they would have to go to more narrowed hours of 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM for those two items. We're also asking them to bring the landscaping, refresh it a little bit, even though it's not bad, as you saw in the photo, it's better than some service stations out there. We have not asked them to do the more SEPTED-friendly landscaping because they have that all installed. We haven't had any documented problems on the site, and that would be more of a physical change, and there was nothing really to trigger that. We've also added Conditions 38 and 39 having to do with healthy store initiatives, so that they've agreed to provide 15% of their shelf space for healthy foods, such as fruits, vegetables, and dairies up in the front of the store. And the original conditions had addressed all the typical safety items with regard to the sheriff, which the sheriff did re-review, so all the lighting and security cameras and videos are all covered by the original use permit conditions, and those are not amended. So, before you, we have a recommendation of approval from the Design Review Administrator, unanimous recommendation for approval from the Vineyard Community Planning Advisory Council, and I will note, there were no members of the public who spoke or opposed at that CPAC meeting, so there's been no opposition at all through the process. Planning staff recommends approval, and the Planning Commission also unanimously recommended approval of the project. So, this slide summarizes the staff recommendations that are in your Board report.
Thank you. Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. LeAnn, these new standards, 38 and 39, I had a question about, says at least 2% of healthy food products need to be on the shelf. Has the Health Education Council, is that a county council or a state council, or?
That's a local group, and so, and they do participate in the review of our projects, and we have been doing this on convenience stores for quite a while, so that's something that's pretty well worked out, and this has become, over the last two or three years, a pretty standard condition that we're putting on all the convenience stores, and I haven't heard any complaints, and typically, people are.
Well, how do people know what is considered healthy, I mean, I think we all have an idea what healthy foods are, but.
Snickers bars.
Snicker bars, yeah. There's peanuts in them, right?
Fritos.
Usually, there's a follow-up oversight for something where you're required to do something, so is there a list that they, of foods they can choose from?
Yes, there is a worked-out list. It's fruits, vegetables, salads, dairy products. Yes, there is a worked-out list of things that are considered healthy.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Natale.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Not so much questions, just to, little further addition to what LeAnn has certainly added and put into the staff report, as well as, obviously, the environmental document. We just note that, at the time, we were talking about how we might initiate the Florin-Vineyard Gap discussions, and North Vineyard Station had just come to the Board, you know, a year or two prior, and so, there was a lot of speculation about what might happen out there, and this site, obviously, was available, it's certainly still owned by the same family and proprietors that brought it before us 20 years ago. And I remember the discussion, because they weren't real pleased with only being able to operate 24 hours for 10 years under that, but because we didn't know what interface it might be with future residential uses, and there was a couple of comments at the time, a Jason property owner who, there's a small house that's adjacent there, and, but we, you know, dealt with that with the block wall and certainly with the, some of the drive patterns on the site itself, and it's a fairly small site. I would just say that, on occasion, certainly not any time real recent, but I've visited the site, it's, you know, as you said, maybe a little bit of refreshing of the landscaping, but certainly well-maintained, and right now, at the four corners, it's still the only really developed use. There's a post office, obviously, in Supervisor Kennedy's district, that kind of sits in the rear of that Tenacre site immediately diagonally across the road, but there's, you know, future plans for use of the site. But this, you know, was one of the first service stations along that stretch, coming from, almost from Calvine Road up to Fruit Ridge, Eldora Creek, where there are service stations in a couple of different locations there. But to my knowledge, there's been no issues with this, and certainly, Mr. Jervon Fred and others have been, I think, pretty conscientious in their business conduct out there, and I believe they even had, at the time, there were some people who were supporting, because there wasn't, there was kind of a dearth of, there was, you know, the Beanie Market at Gerber at Bradshaw, and then that was it till you got closer into Florin Town, into some of the areas, get closer to the freeway. So, you know, my sense is, as you've stated, that they've been a good, you know, good proprietor, that they've, you know, kept up with the conditions, albeit this one with the 24 hours that kind of got set, and then we didn't really, you know, make note of it, I guess, in business license renewals until the more thorough review here recently. So, I just want to make those comments.
Thank you. Any others? Okay. At this point, let the applicant have an opportunity to make a very brief presentation.
Good afternoon. Jim Wiley with Taylor and Wiley on behalf of the applicant, and I have been sworn. We'd just like to thank staff for their work on this, Jesse Shun especially, and we really don't have anything to add. I will say it was pleasant going out to community council and have them comment that this is a really clean bathroom, and they like this, the operations. So, with that, we would ask for your support, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Peters.
I have a quick question I should have asked it before, but I'm not familiar with the gas station. I've seen the pictures in the staff report. On the landscaping, I think planning director said they're, they weren't going to replace it because it was in pretty good shape, but I just want to make sure that your client is aware of the SEPTED defensive kind of landscaping, and if they do landscape in the future, to keep those in mind.
Okay.
If you just would.
Yeah.
Civilization is coming your way.
Right. Thank you.
Any others?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, back to the Board. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, then, if there's no further questions or testimony, then I would move the recommended action as outlined, which includes the environmental document, the use permit, with the conditions and findings outlined in our attachments, and find the project as well, in substantial compliance with the Kennetman Design Guidelines.
Second, we have a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you. Mr. Gill.
I think we've researched the item, and county council has the options, or?
Right. So, during the break, we pulled the policies for community services projects and neighborhood projects that can be funded with TOT funds. This is pretty clearly not a community service project, so we concentrated on the policy for the neighborhood projects. I do not think, unfortunately, this falls within the guidelines. The policy requires that the money must be used for a public purpose, provided by a county department, another government agency, or a nonprofit providing services to the community, and I don't think that this qualifies, holding an appeal hearing is not a service that's being provided to the community. This is just something that we do because it's required by the zoning code. Then it also requires that the project or service funded has to have a clear and measurable deliverable or outcome. That doesn't apply. And then, there are other problems as well, but also that it can't be allocated on a retroactive basis, and I would consider this to be retroactive because the money was already spent. So, there are other issues here as well. I just don't think this is the kind of, the kind of expenditure that qualifies under the policy.
Supervisor Natale.
Then, might I suggest a different approach that would, again, my desire was, I'm prepared to grant the appeal, but was to make the planning department whole. So, I would be willing to, again, if we want to do a separate action, I can certainly reallocate, it's general fund dollars, and if there's that amount, I don't want, you know, I know LeAnn's department, obviously, when these appeals get heard, they end up eating that amount. So, if you want to do internal appropriation adjustments, I would move to, you know, as part of motion, make sure that the planning department is made whole, but to grant the appeal. So, I don't know if that works, Chris.
I'm looking to now for that one. I don't know.
Basically, you can give the planning department $4,381 out of my neighborhood monies to that department. You can do the separate action.
Same, the TOT fund?
Yeah, those are, it's general fund money. We get told time and time again, Chris, that those are general fund dollars.
I think what we have.
But their policy, there's a policy that indicates how they can be governed. If you're talking about the same funding source, that doesn't fit within the policy.
Then just give me $15,000 this year and keep $5,000 in the general fund. I don't care. I mean, you need to figure out a way to do it creatively that doesn't go, I appreciate what you're saying, you researched it. I don't disagree with what you've said, because those are the guidelines. Just give the allocation differently to District Five this year.
I will say that as much as I appreciate creativity as next to the next person, I also appreciate legality, and it sounds like that's.
Yeah, it doesn't fit under the TOT funds. I don't see a way to do that.
Okay, so then, the only option we have is either deny the request or grant the request. If we grant the request, then I know the way it works is the planning department eats the cost. And all I'm saying is, I didn't want the planning department eat the cost. I can work with you later, do that, I can, you know, assuming I have support to grant the appeal. It'd be my commitment to make sure that the planning department was made whole as it relates to this.
I'm going to make the following suggestion, and that's, I think we understand what Supervisor Natale's ultimate goal is. You know, the initial proposal to reach that goal is probably not within the confines of the law, so that's okay. If we were to continue this, and you would be able to have a conversation with Mr. Natale and figure out if there is some way in which we can make the planning department whole, it doesn't cost, I don't want it coming out of the general fund, frankly, I think it's a bad precedent, because I'm not, at this point, willing to support the appeal, or the appellant, but I want to give Supervisor Natale an opportunity to accomplish the goals that he's doing within the confines of the law and not affecting the general fund. Can we do that?
Yes, we can.
Then I move for a continuance to.
You.
7/23.
Can we go August 6? Give us time to look at what we need to do.
Isn't this coming back for, to be heard next week?
Next week.
I don't think it's important to, I don't think you want to couple it with that.
This is just a waiver of the fee.
To avoid having people come down again. It just seems more efficient, but.
I don't want to confuse the issues.
We're Sacramento County, efficiency's not important, so.
August 6.
August 6, okay.
Okay.
All right. I move that we continue this to August 6 and give an opportunity to figure out how to get to where we, I think, we all want to get.
Okay.
Just as a question, I believe all of this is in assuming that the Board would uphold the staff recommendation for denial, and you're.
Right.
So, why don't, maybe we should vote on that.
I think it's cleaner to do it at the same time.
Really?
Yeah. It's $4,000, so you're really, thank you very much. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
What time? Can you pick a time? Any particular time?
I think we'll do 2:00 PM, Flo.
Yeah, we can do 2:00 PM.
We will communicate the time out, depending on our agenda management, but we'll let the folks know what time.
Yeah.
Looks like it's August 6 at 2:00 PM right now, so.
At the same time, I just want to, you know, make the observation that this in no way means that the board is predisposed one way or the other toward granting the waiver. Okay, thank you.
Okay, sorry. So, your next item is item 44, this is the appointment from Your Own Ranks to the Law Library Board of Trustees, and this appointment would be of Lisa Travis.
I move Lisa Travis.
Second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Next is Your Own Ranks to the National Association of Counties, NACO, and that would be for Mr. Serna as the member, and Ms. Peters as the alternate.
I'll move.
Second.
Unanimous vote with those members present, and then we have Own Ranks to the Regional Water Authority, that would be Susan Peters as the member, and Carrie Schmitz as the alternate.
Would anyone else like to do that?
I think that you're ultimately most qualified. I'll second that.
Get the boots out of here.
Mr. Natale, unanimous vote with those members present, and then that concludes your own rank appointments, and we already took care of nominations, and now we're on to county executive comments.
No, no comments.
Board? I want to congratulate Supervisor Peters on her appointment. Other than that, we are adjourned.